Welcome everyone to our work session. Happy Wednesday. I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting. So Ms. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Madam Chair. On August 19, 2020, notice was provided fulfilling all criteria VA CO Chapter 37.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. Would you please proceed with the rule call?
Yes. Seen here. Camson.
Here.
Clanton.
Present.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Martin.
Here. Thank you, everyone. Okay, the first item on our work session agenda today is to review, we're gonna hear a presentation on our accountability plan. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Birdsong.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the school board, and members of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share just a few thoughts with you this afternoon before we get started with our first presentation. As we begin the second quarter of this unprecedented school year, I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to reflect upon the extraordinary work that our school division has accomplished in such a short period of time, thanks to our hardworking, dedicated staff members. Just a year ago, we could not have imagined that we would have started this school year in the midst of a pandemic and that we would face the challenges of keeping students and staff safe. But not only did we accomplish this, I believe that we surpassed expectations and are beginning to truly reimagine education. This is not to say that we have not been met with many obstacles and challenges along the way. We which have, we have faced courageously head on. And in so doing, we have learned many lessons and will use these experiences to make us stronger as a school division and to focus our efforts on continuous improvement. Additionally, I continue to stand in awe of all of our highly dedicated teachers, administrators, and staff who have truly embraced and conquered the many challenges associated with feeling, fulfilling the responsibilities of their positions. Each and every time our staff is able to accomplish what they thought might have been impossible, it is a credit to their professionalism and their dedication to our students and families. Their resiliency and courage are the lights that lead us all in this journey that continues to unfold. Our students have demonstrated perseverance and grit like I have never seen before. I so appreciate how they are continuing to take their education seriously and are striving to be the very best that they can be while managing their own personal challenges during this pandemic. Our parents and guardians continue to be superheroes as they juggle supporting their children's virtual learning, taking care of their families, and working from home or outside of their homes. Parents and guardians, we thank you and could not successfully navigate this journey without your continued support. So I continue to be confident that together we will continue to excel as we enter the second quarter of the school year. This afternoon, Dr. James Poole, our Chief Academic Officer, and Mr. Dennis Fuddy, our Senior Coordinator of Research and Planning, will assist with facilitating a discussion with the board regarding the school board's accountability plan. Next, Mr. Fuddy will review and discuss Norfolk Public Schools' student enrollment data for school year 2020, 2021. Dr. Poole will then give us an update on the STAR reading and mathematics results from the hall administration of these assessments. You also have the opportunity to hear from two voices from the field. Our illustrious building principals, Mrs. Letitia Way Jenkins of Lake Taylor High School, and Mrs. Catherine Capel of Norview Elementary School, who will share with you how they utilize data to inform instructional best practices within their buildings. Dr. Poole, along with members of the school board, School Board Policy Review Committee, will discuss pertinent school board policies for consideration of adoption during the upcoming business meeting. We hope that you find each of these presentations to be informative and helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, and members of the board. This concludes my remarks for this afternoon. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Poole to get us started with our first presentation. Dr. Poole?
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong, and good afternoon, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the board. This afternoon, Mr. Fuddy and I are here to review the updates to the accountability plan, as well as a few minor suggested edits that we have in there. We're prepared to go page by page if you'd like, or if you guys want to leave the conversation through questions, that is fine as well, whatever your preference, we're prepared for.
I'd like for you to present, and then we will ask questions.
All right, that sounds great. So as Ms. Tanner scrolling through, I just wanted to mention on the, on that first highlight is just, there were a few maybe minor edits, like periods or bullet positioning that were changed and edited just for consistency. There were no, nothing, no substantial changes that won't be mentioned as we walk through the document tonight. Ms. Tanner, if you can keep scrolling. The next page. Ms. Tanner?
Ms. Tanner?
So, Mr. Poole, Dr. Poole, if you just want to refer them to a page number?
That's perfectly fine.
I think Ms. Tanner is back now.
Okay. So on page, the second, the page II, we'd like to suggest a language page for this to be consistent with the school level plans, as well as, as well as the fully accredited goal in year three, as the accreditation is being waived again for this year's data. So just looking more consistency there, have goals and targets across the board, and then changing our, our goal on that bottom one to match 2024, since we have a change in the accreditation wave. On the next page, there were no, and sorry, on that last page, the 85% or higher matches the benchmark for, within the table that the board had decided on previously. The next page, there are no changes. The next page that has changes is page three. And on that one, it is just that we notated where tables have updates, or there are no updates, just to make it a little bit more convenient for the review. The next page, four, under progress monitoring, we felt that progress monitoring should be maintained with a focus on all schools and not just schools that are not accredited or haven't met the SAA benchmarks. Additionally, the timelines for reports have been adjusted to meet the needs of extended windows for fall testing, as well as listing PALS and STAR as the assessments to be reported to the board. That word "all" quantifier really makes, opens up to every single test that Norfolk would give, which is probably a little bit too, too much data to present to the board possibly. It would take every minute of every board meeting probably. Page five, remove the word "absolute" and adjust to 2024, since accreditation will be waived for two years due to COVID. And please note that the old and new tables have been left in the document currently for comparisons, but once the board is approving of the changes, we'll take draft off and remove the old tables. And here, the goals have been adjusted to meet the suggested timeline. So you'll notice on the new updated table that we've moved the goals over, and the 100% would be 23, 24, since we have the two years now that will be kind of not applicable, because we won't have data from the state for accreditation. Then on page six, we would just recommend removing the second bullet, as that is the, the, it's kind of a repeat of the first bullet, where the baseline data is 2018, 19. And, and page seven, the next page, the table is updated, just to note the accreditation has been waived, so there are no other changes on there, except for we added the 2018, 19 column with that note. And that'll be the same with page eight and page nine. So if you go to page 10, Ms. Tanner. Page 10 has the social studies data. We'd actually recommend removing this table, since it's no longer a part of accreditation, and the social studies tests have really moved to division performance assessments. Table 11, again, was noted that accreditation was waived, which was on, or page 11, rather, table six. On page 12, added data for the 2019, 20 school year. I would like to note that chronic absenteeism is locally calculated due to the COVID closure. It was not calculated at the state level. Also, through the tables that had multi-years of data, the 15, 16 school year was removed, as the request of the board was to maintain four years worth of data on the tables. So you'll see the 15, 16 drop off as we added this year's data. On page 13, table eight was updated. The name of the award just changed a little bit, and then the data was added there for the 2018, 19 data that was awarded in 2019, 20 school year. Again, that will probably be a TBD change for this coming up year, if the, if the VDOE does something like that. For table nine, we would recommend either the removal of this or using the VDOE growth data instead of the SAA data, since that's what we really focus on with our state accreditation. And then page 14, we, again, recommend removing social studies history, and we recommend referring to the appendices for the indicators, so that it don't have to be changed in multiple locations. We would also like to recommend not using the division benchmark data as an indicator, as we work with teachers on using that data formatively to drive instructional practice. We feel with a high correlation with, between STAR data and SOL data, we feel the use of STAR data to be a good indicator of improvement. And then for table 10, the update for 1920 was NA, and because of no data. Also, the table again drops the 15, 16 data to keep a four-year trend. Page 15, there were no changes, since there's no SOL data. Page 16, we just added the GCI index as one of the indicators, and that's what the state uses for on-time graduation. And the IB diploma table has been added to the plan on here, as that was requested previously. Page 17, simply the old table, and page 18 has the new table for the on-time graduation. And if you'll notice, the targets were added to the right, sub, to the right for subgroups that are below the 85% goal currently. So the NCs just mean that subgroup has met the goal already. And then the new goals build from the subgroups who haven't met the 85% goal as yet. On page 19, there are three tables that still need to be added, and they're noted. The increase in the number of students with workforce readiness skills, as well as the decrease of percentage of overage students, and the diversity in gifted education, those tables are still being worked on to be added. Also, we're recommending adding a table to start tracking the data for the college career and citizen readiness indicator, the CCCRI, because that will be in place with our current juniors, so we just wanted, wanted to emphasize that should be a part of the accountability plan. And then we just, for the IB diplomas, we recommend taking off cert, sort of, sort of certificate report, because the diplomas, the students earn diplomas, they get the diplomas, the ones that don't earn them will get the certificate, so it's, it's just in the numbers. We have the numbers of seniors that are in there for the board, so it's easy to see. Page 20, table 14 has been updated with data, with, sorry, with the 19, 20 data. Just a note on this data, you'll see the, there's a nice growth in the ninth, 10th grade promotion rate for 1920. And that promotion rate is, requires some verified credits, and if you recall, last year, the VDOE allowed for locally awarded verified credits for more students than usual due to the COVID shutdown and the lack of SOL tests. So a lot of our ninth graders who are passing the course earn the verified credit as well. Page 21, the AP data table was updated. We feel the best way to target this data is to compare the enrollment rates with the division's demographic breakdown. So you'll see, if you scroll a little bit further down, Ms. Tanner, you'll see on the right-hand side that the addition of the demographic breakdown for the division was added. As we should see, really level comparisons between our, our enrollment demographics with our division demographics when we look at higher level, really all level courses, but specifically the AP courses. That's one, something we would suggest to track that. Page 22 is just the, I think it just has the rest of the AP data on it. And then page 23, we have the SAT, ACT, and PSAT participation and achievement rates that have been updated. As a reminder, just all accessible administrations of the ACT and SAT were closed in the spring due to COVID closure, and many in the fall were closed. And we are, we are working on some plans for use of the PSAT data within curriculum, as well to expand our work with that data. Page 24, this is the new table that represents the IB graduates. So here you would see through the three years of, hold on, Ms. Tanner, if you can go back real quick for me. Here, you would see we have the three years of data. So you see, 1920, we had 26 IB graduates out of 48 seniors, so that just would tell you that with the 22 student earned certificates on that, that's why we put the certificates out, because it's just the difference between the seniors and the IB graduates. And you'll also note on here, we've added the dual enrollment data for the division as well, as that, that is a goal that we, we know was listed in the, in the accountability plan. All right, page 25, just here, just recommended a language change, instead of saying in September, just saying by the opening of each school year, in case for one, one chance, we open before Labor Day, if it happens, or whatever the case may be, but that way it's, it's not date-specific, but time of year-specific. Page 26, updated the, to reflect the current data. We also recommend changing the data for teacher staffing to reflect a positive. We didn't change the table, but we wanted to note this to the board. Otherwise, we would be looking at that first row of teacher staffing. Therefore, the data would be 97.6% staffed, with a goal of 99% staffing. Just to change it to the positive, to show that, you know, we're, this is how highly we're staffed, instead of looking at the unstaffed number. Simply, it really is semantics change there. Page 27, recommend removing BYOD language and adding the criterion, or creation of a one-to-one plan for the division, as we talked about in previous meetings. And additionally, the target date for capital improvement was December 2019, where we, we pass that, so we need to reestablish that date. Page 28, we're recommending the removal of PBIS from the needs assessment, as the results from proper implementation of PBIS would really show you the improvement with attendance, behavior, and grades. We also recommend adding the language for the targets at the bottom of the page. As written, it says all levels should equal 94%, and it really should read all levels should equal at least 94%. And with absenteeism should be less than or equal to 10% in there. They may be understood, but I think writing them in that way would be a little bit more proper. Page 29, this is a repeat table for student attendance. I, I guess maybe for convenience, we would recommend removing it, since it's a duplicate. But if, if the board wants to leave it here, we'll of course keep it updated as is, and leave the table there. Page 30 is simply old table 20. And page 31 is the updated table, again, as a point of reference. Student behavior data should be compared to demographic data, similar to what we discussed on the AP data table. Therefore, this has been added as a, as target data to the far-right column, and we'd also recommend adding a demographic breakdown for long-term suspensions to add to this data. So if the board wishes for us to do that, we'll work on that to break those down as well. For the board, page 32, the updated table 21 has last year's table additionally, or additionally, we recommend setting the long-term goal to 6%. As that is the goal to be level one within the VDOE. Previously, it was 10%, as you can see. But to be in the green level one without growth, the goal should be 6% there, so we would recommend that change, and you can see we built goals upon that as well, to, to grow to the 6%. Page 33 is the, the old table for climate, climate surveys, and 34 has the 2019 VDOE climate survey data that I think has already been reviewed with the board. It was just added to the plan. Page 35, we're recommending the board allow our, our new Chief of Media and Community Relations to really have input on changes in this area, as well as the ability to create how the data will be collected and reported to the board, so there haven't been any updates or changes to this specific goal area. Pages 36 and 37 have no changes. And then page 38, again, we would recommend updating the reporting dates, as we talked about earlier, and then removing the DBAs from a board report. And 40 and 41 are the same type of updates. And then those are, those are the updates. The only other recommendation that the committee had was to, when we're focusing on data, to focus on state accreditation data and not SAA data in the same areas. Since we're really for accreditation, it's the SOL testing and the allowing for the growth, we would recommend that being the data that we focus on within all of the SOL data tables, and removing the SAA from those, as it, I think it could cause some confusion, and I think it's important for all schools to have the full focus on state accreditation, which, which will in turn, you know, improve our SAA rates as well. But that was the, the final recommendation. So those, Dr. Martin, are the, the quick run-through of the, the additions and edits and recommendations we have.
Thank you, Mr. Freely, and I would say an emphasis on quick, but it's a lot of information to go over, and I appreciate the work that, that you all have done. So I guess at this point, we can open it up for discussion. We can go back. You know, if we want to start from the earlier phases and move through, that's fine as well. Ms. Camson, go ahead.
Thank you. Dr. Poole, excellent. I see some really, really good improvements in the plan. I just have a few questions about some. Of course I do. All right, looking at.
I'm sorry, Ms. Camson, and if you have any specifics, please let us know where you're, where you're referring to, so we can.
I'm hoping that, because I had a table before, the, I was comparing it to the old one, and the page numbers were different, so I'll try and keep as close as I want. But I started with double I, our timeline sheet, which is, I don't know what she used, probably the third one still. It's double I. Yeah, that should be the same. All right, Dr. Poole, the terminology on some of this has changed. Was there a reason for not using absolute goal, for example?
So the, the, the rationale for that was that, you know, that our goal should be our goal, and that there weren't, shouldn't be like different levels of goals, that if, if our goal is, is, you know, all schools highly performing, or all school gaps closed, you know, it's not really an absolute goal, it's just a goal, but again, that, that's our recommendation for the, for the board.
The only reason I, I prefer absolute in those particular terms, and as you noticed, there are only four for the entire five-year plan, is because, as I'm sure you know, an absolute goal is different than a regular goal. It's another level, like you said. But it's the one where we say, this is where we want to be, and we want to be there on this date, and there would be no changes to it. And I know this is a pandemic, and I'll get to that in a second book, but it's like, we, we went through the first, on a normal time, we'd go through the first year, and we would look to beat benchmarks or targets, targets, okay, that's, that's what they are now, targets. And if we didn't make our target, would we then push our goal down the road, because we didn't make the target that we should have made that year on the way to making that goal? Or do we say, this is an absolute goal, instead, we need to look back at what we didn't do as the adults in the district, as the educators in the district, to make that target, so we would be online for the absolute goal? And as you know, that's, that's different than just a regular goal. We say, oh, well, let's push it down, because what we're looking at is to up our academic program. Now, I know we're in the middle of a hundred-year pandemic, and I had had on my notes earlier to make an adjustment, which I've never done in my life, to my absolute goals, but then I'd never lived in a pandemic before. So, but what I notice here with the adjustment is it looks like it kicked, kicked it down the road two years. You know, we missed two quarters of school. We do have instruction going. It's certainly not within the classroom with the teacher. I think we all realize that, but, and we'll probably have a third, hopefully, as we, I mean, during the second one will be our third quarter, we'll be out of class and doing virtual, and obviously, we'll need to make adjustments, and hopefully, that'll be our transition time into face-to-face person-to-person. But why two years? Why are we delaying that, that absolute goal for two years?
So the reason.
A lot.
So absolutely, and the reason for the two-year delay is that we, we're going to be missing two years of accreditation data. As you know, last year, we, we lost, and then this year, the VDOE has already waived, you know, announced they're going to be waiving accreditation for this year as well. So we felt by losing those two years of data, you know, our next set of data is going to be in the spring of 2022. And, and to keep our absolute goal, when we get that first set of data, just really, it really seemed like we're, we're walking into an unknown at that point, so that was the reason for the two years.
Well, when I look at it, I look at it as a challenge and a way to track it with other data, stars, PALS, you know, those types of data. I have a concern. I, I would request that we only, only change that. It's an absolute goal. We're already making the thunder start, because we're touching the absolute goal. I would like, I really would prefer that it was only a year. You know, if you can easily make a goal, you know, what kind of goal is that? If, if we're making a goal that is, is the thing that we're aiming for, because it's so great, I mean, it's been quite a while since we had all of our schools accredited in Norfolk. And certainly, as a parent, thinking about all of our parents, that's what they would expect too. I don't, I think it's watering down our program. And, and I think a year, I'm hoping that we, you know, that would be it. You know, we can always look at it again, but once we start messing with the absolute goals, two years, that's a long time. That's a lot of postponement for students, when we're not all focused on how important it is to have our schools accredited. So that's a request I put in. And I think that's all for this page, because you've changed the word shot, the light moon shot, that's okay. But I would like to request that that two-year delay be shortened to one year, and we'll see how it goes. No, we won't have SOL data, but we'll have a lot of other data we can use to look at proficiency, to look at achievement gaps. Okay, this one is table contents? No, no, sorry, that was something I put when I was going to do it myself. Scratch that one. Moving to goal one, priority one. The testing dates in there that you changed for the STAR and the PALS that you adjusted for those, because the fact that we're in virtual and quite a struggle to get the testing done and, and have it accurate. So is that something that's being done just for this year, while we're in virtual, and it will revert back next year? When we will absolutely be in our classrooms with our children?
That is the absolute hope, Ms. Camson, is that this is for temporary for this year, because of the testing window dates.
Right, because with universal screen, if we test it later, which is what PALS is, which is what STAR is, then we lose credit for all the improvement we've, we've given our children in the first two months. All right, thank you on that one. I don't have a lot. Moving to table eight, priority two. And table eight, the recognition of school performance. I'm, I think, as, I think our parents have a right to know at what level our schools are performing. And I know we have our new accreditation criteria that's based on growth and achievement gaps, and it's about time. We needed to do that, because the, it, it's much more realistic, especially for an urban school district like we are, to look at taking kids from where they are, and how far did we take them? And so I have no problem with that. That's absolute, there's that word, absolute. But I have a problem with, about not allowing parents to know just what our proficiency levels are. And when we look at high academic performing schools, we're looking at proficiency rates. And so if we change what that table's all about, we're already using the growth and all that's being done in the state level award. This is the district level award. And what you're doing is you're just repeating the same recognition, which is the growth, but for, our parents should know when we say high performing, that we're at a higher level of, of, of proficiency. And so I strongly object to changing the NPS High Academic Performing Schools Award. All right.
So just to clarify, so you want to keep that as an SAA benchmark as is, is that correct?
Yes. I don't want it changed, because it's. Yes, I don't want it changed because it's measuring something different than the state award is measuring. The state award is measuring something that mirrors their accreditation, which is perfect. They need to do that. But we also need to recognize the schools that are high academic achieving schools. And that's what the second award is. So one is, one is congratulating the hardest thing, all the growth. If you start really low, it's really, really hard to get up. So the first award recognizes that hard work. And then once they move on, these, the, they'll be able to start looking for the second award because then they'll move on and become more high performing instead of improvement. And that's just, that's my request.
Ms. Camson.
That's a request that's strong enough that I would, if we're doing this as a whole plan, that would stop my, that would affect my cooperation with that. Okay, and I'm doing this quick.
Ms. What page were you on with the awards? I'm sorry, I, I was a little slow to catch up on the page.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm on goal three. Last goal, last priority. My pages, I'm looking at my pages in, in the original plan that was approved in the summer of 2019 and the page numbers are different.
It's thirteen. It's page thirteen.
All right, this is the page that's goal three. Priority nine, attract and retain, retain strong community partnerships and strengthen family engagements. It's way, way, keep going, you're going all the way to priority nine.
This should be page thirty-five.
Yeah. Oh, you know what? I think I got that when you said it and I need to write it down in my notes. It is page thirty-five. Thank you, Dr. Paul.
No problem.
Oh, there it is. All right. When we were, when this was being planned by the Accountability Committee Work Group, we talked about what we would use for the board level indicators, which were PTA, the PTA numbers, we actually were expecting those to be collected and, and given to us so we would know if a school, what schools, if we still have any that don't have PTA. I know Charisse has been all over this, working on this herself. But do we have schools that don't have PA, PTAs? If we do have schools that have PTAs, what are their numbers? That's why that says PTA numbers. So I'm not sure why that data was not collected. And when it comes up to partnership and volunteer reports, we track that. We need to track who's volunteering. Are they volunteering for academics or are they volunteering to do other things in the building, like coming in and painting doorways or something? We don't have anything, any data here, so we don't know if it's happening or not. And how many partnerships do we have at school level? What do we have at the district level? Are there pockets where they're not being able to form partnerships? And we would know to go in and give that school assistance, like we would know to go in and give a school assistance if they didn't have an active PTA or they just had a skeleton PTA. And, and so I'd like to see the, the charts of that. And I know Mr. Foodie probably has examples of those because this data, data used to be collected all the time. So he probably already has something. So I'd like to have those added. Not, I know we can't now go back and, and capture data that we don't have, but I'd like to have those charts created to go in. And obviously we can't collect it now because we don't have volunteers coming in our schools or anything. But I'd like it to be put in there so that we can start populating it and get a fresh start with what we wanted to start with this year and get a start with it next year when the, not the school year, yeah, previous one. And that's it. Once again, though, I've actually saw many, many improvements in here that I really liked. So these are just a few little things that I would like to have changed. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, any other hands? Dr. Gabriel and then Ms. Bastine.
Thank you, Dr. Martin and Dr. Bertong. This is a very comprehensive update to our accountability plan and it's probably one of the highlights of achievements for our board. I think it really puts a focus on where we're trying to focus our energy for students and it's at a high enough level that we can keep our eyes focused on the academics, climate and other items. I have a couple of items that I'd like to bring up for consideration. I'm going to first touch on Ms. Camson's point. I do support her recommendation. I think that, you know, let me pull up the slide here. This would be page II. I think it's in Norfolk Public Schools blood that we are competitive and that we always try to do our best and achieve our best. I think that when we rightfully so adjust goals based on the unprecedented circumstances that we're in, I can definitely understand that. But I would say let's, let's bring our school accreditation maybe to 2023. As Ms. Camson suggested, and Ms. Camson, I hope I'm not incorrectly stating what you have stated, but I do think that it should force us as a division, if we need to put more attention, whether that be in staffing, in policy, in budget, reaching out to our community partners, reaching out to our city council, whatever we have to do to get our schools on target as fast as possible. We know that that is the most important job for us. And while I'm not looking at the term accreditation, what I'm really going after is proficiency in reading, proficiency in math and in the other subjects. That's what I really want to do. And as fast as we can get there for our kids, I think that that is important. So I would, I would ask our board to go out on a limb and say, let's, let's maybe shoot for the 2023 to be fully accredited versus 2024. And, and see if we can do that. The next item that I would recommend is the page that delineated the SAT scores. These are just minor items and I can go back and, and find that. But if we could just put what the actual scores are for passing and for whatever the top score is, that would be helpful. That, you know, as a physician, when I take my MCATs, I'm looking at whatever the highest score is and that's how I determine what my range is going to be. So whatever that, give us a frame of reference, basically.
And Dr. Gabriel, I gotta ask a quick question on that. So would you mean like under the notes up there to put the score ranges in the notes? So we don't add to the table, but we add it to the notes part?
Yes, that would be very helpful.
No problem.
And I think that was, yeah, I think that was page, perhaps page twenty-three, that was the SATs.
That's correct.
Okay. And then on page thirteen. On thirteen, I, I also have to agree with Ms. Camson with regards to identifying, identifying the schools that we have that are in that top performing, high performing and meeting benchmark ratings. You know, this is, this is at a board level. It gives us an idea for how proficient our schools are. And it just encourages us to work harder and do what we need to do in order to get more schools up into those levels. I, I, in no way am I trying to isolate schools. But this is something that we have to reach for and that's how I'm interpreting this table. I, I want all of our schools to be working towards that high performance. And I know that we have two excellent principals that are with us tonight that are very competitive. They want the best for their kids and they're, they're in these ranges and they work very hard to get there. And I think that we should recognize feats such as this. So those are my suggestions. I agree with the other items that were mentioned and thank you for your time and effort in putting the updates into the accountability plan.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel and Ms. Bastine. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Dr. Paul and Dr. Bertong for, for the presentation on the Accountability Plan. I have some general, like high-level questions and one, I think, really, well, I'll start with questions about some of the, the updates. But then I would like to come back and, and as a board, have some discussion around our goals. And if we are still, you know, happy with what they are and if not, you know, what we can, you know, to, to kind of come up with either different goals or modify goals based on some of the data that we'll, we'll see going forward. But first, so some higher, higher level questions I have. Well, number one, so one of the things that we had talked about when this plan was first put together was also looking more closely at our students with disabilities and looking at disability categories. And I, you know, and I've been wondering over the last couple of years when we first made that introduced, you know, the idea of looking at our data more analytically or looking at the disability categories, if that was even the right way to really examine that, you know, the broad range of disabilities that encompasses students with disabilities. And how do we better monitor the performance, academic performance of that subgroup? And I, you know, I'd really like to hear your thoughts and the administration's thoughts about how we could really examine that in a more meaningful way. And if there's other data that we should be looking at to, to better monitor our students. And I say this also layering on top of, we know that the Virginia Department of Education has also been, you know, you know, there was a report found that there were deficiencies in how the agency itself is monitoring our students with disabilities. So I wonder at our district level, what we could be doing better to monitor our students with disabilities too. So I'd like to, you know, hear your thoughts around that.
So.
A lot in a whole, a whole meeting in itself, but you know, I just want to kind of keep that at the forefront.
Absolutely.
Accountability plan. So like other indicators that we might need to be monitoring?
What's, yes, yeah, like how, how can we, are we looking at it in the most meaningful way? And if not, what can we be looking at? What specific indicators can we be looking at other than just breaking out, breaking down the data by disability?
So I think some indicators you can look at that I've seen looked at in other divisions are enrollment in, in different levels of courses. So, you know, like we talked about with the AP data specifically, are we, are we seeing some of our, our students with disabilities enrolling in honors level courses early on? Are, are we showing where we can, we can possibly push the limits where we can? We, I think we do a nice job of, of really focusing on our, our SWD data and anything we look at. And Dr. Walter and her team do a phenomenal job of that as well. As far as looking at specifics, you know, one of the other assessments that we have is, is the VAP, which is an alternative assessment for certain students with disability that we, we could look at. But I don't know how in depth we'd be able to, to look at that without possibly identifying some students because some of that data is really low numbers. The, you know, really the enrollment level, I would look at our attendance and you know, thoughts as, as far as that with our students with disability, would be some of the focal points I'd have just off the top of my head. Of course, I'd, I'd work with Dr. Walter to get more in-depth information for you. But those, you know, that, that course enrollment, I think is something that we're not looking at in this accountability plan right now. We, our principals, of course, look at that data. But that's something globally we could start looking at as well to see, you know, how our students, even across all demographics, you know, who's taking an honors level course or not taking an honors level course and why are they or why aren't they?
Yeah, that's great. And that, that is something that we've talked about in the past, even with our AP data, you know, looking at that, having those, looking at it by those subgroups that we've identified. All right. The other thing, and you mentioned, I think if I heard you correctly, and I know we've talked about this among the board in the past, is, are the DBAs. And so it sounds to me like there's some concern about really looking at that for this purpose. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there any concern? Because if I heard correctly, the STAR data best correlates with SOL data. Are there assessments like the DVA that, do, do our teachers have to administer that assessment? Are there way? And if not, if it's not meaningful, why are they administering it?
So I, I don't want to say it's not meaningful. That's not at all what I mean. The meaningfulness in the DVA is really for formative use with the teachers. So they know where their students are and where they may need to circle back to or where they need to reinforce some of the, the learning in the classroom, how they should be grouping students differently for small group instruction. I think when we bring that border to the, that data to the board, it just puts a, a different level for teachers and it's not emphasizing the use that we really want them to have with DBAs. It's important for instructional use, but I, I don't know that it adds value to a board report because we really want teachers to dig differently into that data. Where the STAR data is something that's nationally referenced, it's national, you know, it's not just a Norfolk-made assessment. It, it's, it's bigger. And I think we can gain value with that with reporting to the board. So you have an understanding of where we're seeing growth or not, where the DBAs are really used to formatively drive instruction.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. And I should back up. I, I do support all of the recommendations that you've made. I do think they're good ones, especially, you know, I've, as the board, as my colleagues know, I, I've had issue with just the, the, I think it was under priority to that table eight of designating our schools. And I feel that until we really examine the structures that disproportionately, you know, place some of our schools in a position to be higher performing versus others. Or I think we need to look at our schools in more challenging, challenged environments before we start classifying schools as high performing, low performing. That concerns me and it has always concerned me. And so I personally, you know, have not supported that piece in the accountability plan. So I do appreciate that recommendation. The other thing is we had talked about for the graduation data have, looking at advanced and standard diploma. And I don't, I don't see that in this updated draft unless I'm, I, I keep looking through here. And I don't see that.
It was not, it is not added in this draft.
Okay. Um, because we had had that and that, that to me is an important piece of the graduation data that I think we need to look at. And again, that was also, we had that in the previous accountability plan and broken out by subgroups. So I think we need to look closely at that as well. The other thing, this is just kind of general. So with everything going on right now, you know, I appreciate that you were looking, you know, two years down the road and trying to move the targets and adjusting them based on what we know is going on right now and impacting our students and our teachers. And I support your recommendation. But I would also like to know, are you looking at, in terms of the methodology of coming up with the targets itself? Are, you know, what are you using to determine what the targets should be? Or given, you know, given the current state of affairs?
So which, Ms. Bastine, which target specifically you're talking about?
Goal one, the academic targets?
Hi, computer.
I mean, like, so like what assumptions are, are you making and how are you determining what those targets should be?
So currently we have not changed those targets at all. We've left those as the board had them. Because ultimately, you know, when we, when we have data again to place in there, I think we can reset some goals if we have to. But at this point, we didn't feel the need to change those goals because we know where we want to land, you know, by the end of this accreditation plan. So those were set for those reasonings, but we would like, we would recommend keeping the goals, the targets as is year by year Um, so those were set for those reasonings, but we would like, we would recommend keeping the goals, the targets as is year by year. Um, and not looking at those again until we have some new data to really look at.
Okay. Okay, um, all right, thank you, um, I'll defer to my colleagues for it for their questions.
Thanks, Ms. Bessin, um, Mr. Clayton and then Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Most of my appreciate Dr. Paul, the work that you and the committee uh to update this here. A lot of the questions that I did have, I will just say here, were already answered, so thank you, Ms. Bessin and uh Ms. Campson for raising those. Um, Essa, um, making sure that those targets um are there and I answered that for myself, I found that literally in the um the document. But I wanted to go back to what was being raised by Ms. Campson and uh Dr. Gabriel about the um. I guess it's the full accreditation piece, uh, just want to make sure I was following that, twenty twenty-two, is that what you all were talking about moving that target? Twenty twenty-three, so moving it back a year?
It was down, Mr. Clayton, I I said I'd like it only moved a year, it was from twenty-two to twenty-three. And and uh Dr. Paul's recommendation was move it two years to twenty-four, if that helps clarify what you're asking. I didn't want it, I didn't want us to to kick it down so far, there are a lot of children, the time is clicking on the lives of our children. We don't need, we want to have good sharp, so that was my suggestion, just move it to twenty-three instead of twenty-four.
All right, and this is for full accreditation of all our schools?
Yes.
That's what goals are, something to.
No, I'm I'm quite a quite aware. Realist in there, thank you, but I'm also a realist in the respect of, we have a lot of unknowns right now. I I don't mean it's about, you know, we are in a pandemic and you made um made that very clear. I I. I'm all about keeping goals, I know we had this whole discussion about absolute, but I mean, I just want to be real and that we're not setting ourselves up for figure if we don't know. I mean, hopefully, we're getting the data, I know that the administration is working on that to identify uh what supports. Uh, we need to have in place for students who are now in this virtual learning environment, you know, maybe potentially in a hybrid, all these other additional things there. And there are a lot of unknown variables, and so I appreciate the administration, I appreciate the plan. Um, kind of, you know, setting some goals that we can work towards aspirational um for all of our students, because student success is our number one thing. Um, but I guess it kind of dovetails into this other piece for me, then I guess for those who are watching, Dr. Paul. Um, what things are we looking at putting in place to support um the plan uh that we have here, particularly when we talk about um. You know, closing the achievement gaps and trying to identify, I don't know if that that's been mentioned, you know, for parents or a layperson who's just, I know we get into the middle of this. But how are we kind of working in some other things? I know we have I-DASH and some of the other other things, because we talked about utilizing um awards. To recognize if a school is accredited and and all these other different things. But there are some requirements through ESSA that we have to do anyway, to um on report cards or on the various different schools. But if you could just elaborate a little bit for a person who's watching this, um, you know, what do we, what do we have in place to try to help? Uh, meet these, this plan that you're putting for for us?
So one of the things that we've used for a few years now is, of course, the STAR assessment. And we actually expanded that, as you'll hear shortly in the in the next presentation. And we've expanded that to include Algebra One and Geometry and English Nine, so that we've moved it all the way through to the high school. Um, so that we have reading and math data at all levels. And we'll, we're going to specifically dig into uh our gap groups tonight with that. And we've been working with our teachers and staff on that, the STAR data, um, and then that's where we're really going to be looking at growth. The VDOE has also put out a memo. Ooh, it was a couple of months ago now that they will be sending information on how they want to collect some data from divisions around how we're assessing growth. So looking at that STAR data, looking at our um local assessment plan. Um, our ways we're we're working through this, you know, looking at our attendance data, you know, still is is a is a very big watch for us as well. Uh, to make sure that that all of our our subgroups are are meeting attendances and we're meeting their needs as well. Um, those would be the the bigger items that we're looking at that would help drive um an understanding of of where we are year after year. So my recommendation would be really looking at that STAR data for growth um as we as we progress. To kind of replace that thought of where are we with the traditional SOLs, just knowing we won't have that from last year or from this year.
So Dr. Paul also just to follow to that, for a person, you know, a parent who's just watching this again. We, there's a lot of information here when we talk about closing subgroups and those gaps. Why is that important or why should a parent be, you know, or why should they feel that that's important? Why do we have this in our plan?
Was it so, because all students should be learning, all students should be progressing in their education. Um, you know, there's an old adage, you know, if if a teacher taught something and a student didn't didn't learn it, that a teacher really teach something. All students need to be learning. Um, and and when we look at gaps between an all student group and a specific subgroup, then we're seeing certain students that aren't learning. And aren't progressing how we want them to progress, so we want to dive deep in that data to see exactly which students. And I think the phrase that was coined by this Board of Equity and Opportunity Students, you know, I think we look at that totally different now and we we really dive into. Which group of students may be in that equity and opportunity and it may be different from assessment to assessment or from. Application to application, um, we need to be concerned about all of our students so that they leave our school system, they graduate. And they are college citizen or career ready when they walk out the door, they're either ready to go to college or ready to start a career. Or they're on the pathway to a certification that helps break the sa- the cycle of poverty.
I appreciate it, and then just Dr. Martin to wrap that up, I just want those who are watching while we're having this discussion about the accountability plan. Uh, the 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 step that this board took maybe about two years ago in refreshing this, um, this will also. Will help us drive when we start looking at our strategic planning uh process down the road. But this is so that we as a board hold ourselves accountable, working with our administration and to the public. Um, as to what we see student success is, and I know that Dr. Bergsong, you mentioned. Um, at one of our last meetings, a former leader of this district used to have a phrase that they would talk about raising the ceiling and the floor simultaneously. Making sure that no child is left behind in the respect that we're addressing every student's need. So I just want to make sure that those points are derived home as to why we're having this discussion, why this is important. Um, and I appreciate the work that the administration is doing with this and that we all hold ourselves accountable. Um, and and hopefully, uh, and I know that my colleague, Ms. Bessin, mentioned about revisiting the the goals and priorities. Um, that, you know, we just go ahead and reaffirm, I I agree that we need to have that conversation. Are these still the goals and the priorities that we see as important for us, uh, moving the district forward? Thank you, Dr. Martin.
You're welcome, thank you, Mr. Clayton, Ms. Smith, do you still have a comment or question?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Paul, for the presentation and the work put into it. Uh, my question is around social studies and history, social science and history. Although it's no longer a benchmark of the state, how can we continue to measure? Or assess it and uh ensure that our students are seeing growth in this area? Um, just bec- just because it's no longer a benchmark of the state, I don't necessarily subscribe to. It shouldn't be something that we should just uh discontinue looking at in terms of progress.
Uh, Ms. Smith, that's a a great question, we do have performance-based assessments in place for those courses as the VDOE has has requested. Um, I will have to do some more digging uh to see how we could probably possibly put it on the accountability report. But you know, for you and for the public, no, um, absolutely, we are not dropping any, anything of importance. For social studies, it is an, it is a key uh content area and and I don't say that because my wife's a history teacher who who probably is watching this right now. I say it because it is, it's vital for us to know our history, it's vital for us to 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 be aware of all of the social studies concepts that are taught. And we do uh follow the standards and we do performance assessments now that are just um. They're they're more tangible and real for our students than the traditional SOL test was. So Ms. Smith, I'll have to work with our senior coordinator, Ms. Lopez, on that and really think about how could we report it. Uh, to the board in a better way and sort of is leading the table.
Yes, I would like for us to keep that in the accountability plan.
I have to agree with that, as you know, as a social scientist, um, we have to, you know, we talk about. You just said having um our graduates be good, good citizens and be able to participate in society. And I mean, that is essential that they have an understanding of the context of social. Um, so our history and uh the social sciences and, you know, of course civics. So that's definitely a good point, thanks for bringing that up, Ms. Smith. Um, anyone else? Sorry, sorry, Ms. Smith and then Mr. Jordan.
So, Dr. Paul, my second question, if you'll go to page twenty-four, I believe it is. Yes, twenty-four, I just want to make sure I understand this. So our overall goal is plus five percent a year. And twenty twenty-one, we're starting out with twenty-eight as the target. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, it's thirty, are we supposed to see each of those increase in five percent increment?
Correct, five percent increment, so remember, this table is in total student numbers. So that one, twenty-six percent, that's twenty-six students in nineteen twenty that were IB graduates, that got the IB diploma.
Those, okay, those aren't percentages.
Correct, those are student numbers on that table.
Okay, got you, thank you.
No problem.
We might want to, um, we might want to identify that.
We'll, we'll put a key on that, I agree, Ms. Smith.
No more questions.
Okay, Mr. Jordan, thank you.
Thank you, I uh appreciate uh what everyone else has said thus far. I guess I have a couple of things I'd like to have the board to consider and maybe all of us to consider. So from uh from one perspective, I would like to see, uh, I guess my thought was as we were. Uh, re-envisioning the school board accountability plan uh in twenty fifteen and then upgraded it in twenty eighteen. My thought was, was that all this paper and charts would go away. And that we would have a, all of this would be in a uh electronic system. Where at any point in time, uh, board members could go uh to a dashboard, follow the data. And and then allow for us to have, um, you know, discussions about the the board's role. In impacting these positive outcomes. So if you, when you look at the accountability plan, there's a a chart. That has board actions on it, uh, let's see, it is. Uh, appendix three on uh on page forty-five. So, um. I think what we are doing in terms of the data that we are collecting and and monitoring is is very important. I think we have uh transitioned um this into a district accountability plan, which I think is is fine. Um, but part of the intent or part of something I think we should not lose sight of is. The piece associated with the board's accountability plan uh was really intended around. What what actions, what behaviors, what things should the board do? To uh positively impact student achievement and positive outcomes for the district. So as we've worked over the last several years, looking at everything from um. Working with the cooperative strategies, um, working on this accountability, looking at reviewing our policies. All of that was was an effort to try to tie things together so that board actions supported. Positive student outcomes, uh, and that the board had access to this information to help us to monitor. Not only how the district was doing, but how we were doing to support that that action. So I think that we may have an opportunity now to transition um. All of this information into a online system, so kind of move away from the paper. Where we are tracking charts and tables, uh, but actually getting to the point where we are receiving. Information from the charts and table that informs our knowledge, that then informs our our actions. Um, so I just want to put that out there, uh, for one thing, for the the board to uh to consider. The uh, the other thing.
Sir Jordan, before moving. Just real quick, so what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm taking this a little farther, and my interpretation is, because I like what you're saying, is to um. Maybe use this on a dashboard, because I think we kind of ta- talked about this before and I don't know where it landed. But um, what I'm hearing is to display the data maybe in real time, so that we can keep referring to it and using it throughout the year.
When it's, when it's appropriate or if it's in a warehouse, then then so be it, but um. When we had the uh dashboards, you will see where we were transitioning some of these reports. Onto the dashboard, just as the state, you know, transferred or eventually started doing the school quality profile. So we were kind of ahead of the curve in trying to um take the data information and be able to present it in such a way. That we could understand what we were seeing and then be able to say to ourselves, well, what do we do next? To continue to make progress towards the goals that that we've established. So I'm suggesting that I think the content is fine, but really what we've done today is we've talked about the content. And so the the real intent is you have this content, but what does it mean to us? What are we going to uh do with it if we see that um certain students are not getting IB? Diplomas and versus others getting certificates, that's why at one point we had that broken out. What is it that we need to do as a board or what is it that the district is going to undertake? What do we establish as a priority so that we see improvement in that in that area? So I think what we have here is is good, um, good reporting. But I would encourage us to consider moving away from just having it in this format. But really having it so that it can be presented in charts and graphs and uh. Uh, and and with real-time information that that informs us during our work sessions or during our retreats. Um, or in whatever other format that uh that the information may be presented. The the other piece is, when we, when we were looking at this in twenty fifteen. It was um, at the time, we didn't think our data warehouse and our systems were in place. That we could then integrate it into a online system. So we we use this chart again, hoping that eventually those two things would would catch up. Uh, lost my train of thought for a second, oh, I know what it was, but a year later, we adopted the the equity policy. And the intent there was that we would have a district scorecard and we would have school by school scorecards. So if you look at the many of the items that we have here in the school board accountability plan. And you look at some of the items that we have in the uh, in the school board's equity policy. I think we need to integrate the two and then actually move forward with our annual equity report and with. Uh, school report cards, again, can be electronic or printed out. That then really allows us to tie into what I think Ms. Campson and others were talking about in terms of being able to see. How our schools are performing, not just uh in particular academic areas, but these other measures as well. So do we have uh funding, there was a report that, uh, Heckinger Report had a had a story out uh this week. About um school funding, or as we have in our accountability plan and we're looking at. Why is it that at some schools we are finding that the gifted enrollment is high and other schools not so high? So those school equity report cards and the district equity report card would allow us to see that information. And then marry it with the the actions that we may take um uh moving moving forward. So those are just a couple of more overarching things I would ask as a board that we we consider and take a look at. And then I I just had one specific question based upon the presentation. You had, you had mentioned earlier, going through the charts, uh, state data versus ESSA data. And I thought the reason that we were trying to make sure that we had the ESSA data in there, and Mr. Clayton can speak to this. Was we want to be intentional about monitoring our ESSA progress. So it wasn't so much state data versus ESSA data, it was state data and ESSA data. So I was trying to figure out, uh, as someone who was looking at it with a fresh pair of eyes, what it was that was driving you to. If I understood your comment correctly, suggest that we. Uh, shy away from or not have the ESSA data. suggest that we, um, shy away from or not have the ESSA data and put more emphasis on the state data versus having both of those available to us, uh, for our monitoring purposes?
Uh, Mr. Jordan, that's a, a great question. And I, I think some of that was, you know, every division I've worked in and, and worked with strategic planning or, or accountability plans. Um, you know, especially once the state changed their accountability plan for growth, they report out the, the VDOE growth. M-my recommendation would be more that we provide the board with a, a separate report on ESSA data. And maybe this focuses more on accountability since the ultimate, um, or the, um, the, um, the ultimate goal of the plan, um, is the, the absolute goal rather, is to have our schools accredited. Um, that really focuses on our state data more than the ESSA data. And when we focus on that state data, we're going to see improvements in the ESSA data. But my thoughts were if we focused on the VDOE accreditation data within the accountability plan, of course, we could do a report based on data for ESSA data to the board and, you know, submit a report to the board. So you have that data, not saying it's not important. Um, but for accreditation purposes, I would, I would rather see the VDOE, um, kept data as a part of, of this and not the ESSA data.
Yes.
Oh, good, Ms. Clanton, good.
No, I was, I was going to comment on that one. Um, I, I cautioned that particularly because the, uh, I know the National Urban League actually, uh, did a review on the report cards and did report cards on the ESSA plans that were submitted. Virginia got an F. So I'm concerned about that particular piece. Um, and I, you know, I know that we had a lot of discussion and uh, about that. And I, I really want to make sure that that is at, because it, ESSA covers a whole nother thing than just the, the accountability piece that we're, we're doing. There are a lot of those things that we have embedded in here, the closing those achievement gaps and so forth that are highly important. So I, I don't know, an extra report would be nice. But I think that we still need to make sure that when people see this plan, they know that we are, we're valuing both of those things just as equal.
Yeah, and, and, and just, just for, you know, and that was my intent point. I just think that, um, so Dr. Poe, um, you had mentioned that the ultimate goal of the plan is all schools accredited. I just, I don't, I don't see that as the absolute goal of the plan. I see the absolute, all schools accredited is one, um, uh, outcome we want to achieve. I think there are other outcomes in there and that really, uh, uh, student learning and there are many other things that we have in that plan that will help drive um, full accreditation. So I think full accreditation is something that we all share. But I think there's so much more than that. You can be fully accredited and still have all kinds of gaps and challenges and facilities that are aging and so many other things that we have, uh, touched on in the, in the plan. So I don't, I don't want us to lose sight of the, the ESSA piece, however it should be done. Um, but it just caught my attention because I thought maybe from the perspective that you were looking at it from the chief academic also, I think that makes sense. I just wanted to have an understanding of it because I think as a board, from a board perspective, we were just trying to make sure that we were monitoring ourselves, uh, uh, accordingly and appropriately to make sure that we were meeting and exceeding not only the ESSA goals, but also meeting and exceeding whatever the VDOE says. We don't see the VDOE as our ultimate measure. We just want to make sure that we meet whatever the VDOE has set and then, uh, excel beyond that. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Can we have it then as an appendix? Um, so that way it's still within the accountability plan. I understand your rationale, Dr. Poe, but can we, can we put it in as an appendix piece so that it's still being tracked? And eventually, when we get things moved over to a, a dashboard, if that ends up being the case, it's, it's still there?
Or, or I would even consider if, if, um, and Mr. Mr. Fuddy might punch me through the computer on this. But if you wanted a, a, uh, an accountability table for VDOESOLs and then an ESSA table right alongside it. And when I read this though, it's just confusing to me coming in fresh with it to see this growth and then the ESSA and then the ba- what is the baseline based on? It's based on ESSA. But maybe we add to it so that you, it's still in the accountability plan. But I, I just think with these, when we're looking at SOLs, if, if we're looking at these in the way of accreditation and closing gaps, these tables seem to focus on two pieces where I think we should focus on one per table possibly.
I agree with that.
Ms. Ms. Campson has her hand. Dr. Martin, you need to unmute. Ms. Campson has her hand.
Sorry, Ms. Campson, I'm on mute. I need to.
Oh, so I need my on little thing, Dr. Martin. Okay. Uh, just real quick response. Mr. Jordan, actually, the, the, our current accountability plan had four absolute goals, ultimate goals, and one of which was full accreditation for all the schools. But we also had, if you look at the bottom where the next three kick in in year five, it also included some of the very things you said, the closing of all achievement gaps. That's like top. And then it had the high performing schools, all schools would reach that level. And then it also had on-time graduation. So it did have four instead of just one. And those are the, that, that all of our schools are accredited, that we close the achievement gap. So every, every child is included in proficiency. We graduate all of our children on time. Those are what the whole plan was all about. So just real quick on that. And, and one other thing, if, if we're talking about changing goals and priorities, the plan isn't where the goals and priorities come from. If we, if we look at the plan, we'll, if you, the goals on the plan are the school board's three goals. The priorities on the plans that fall under those goals are the school board's priorities. So if you're going to change it here and why you would change of accountability plan in the middle, I'm really not sure. But if you're going to change it, the board will have to get back together and talk about whether all of our goals and priorities need to be changed before we go to, to change that. And finally, on the, the high performing schools, that's built around high expectations for children. Children tends to, to do what we expect them to do and so do teachers, so do principals. And if we don't have high expectations for them, if we have low expectations for where they can go and how far they can achieve, then we'll probably get, you know, what we assume is going to happen. And the idea and the reason they're called high performing is kind of a national thing for high performing schools is that you're scoring at the ninety percent level. So they're the ninety schools is what we call them. So you, those are things that we need to keep in mind and we need to be honest with our parents. Our parents need to know what kind of schools they're bringing their children into so they can work with us, even help more. And so they need to know if there's, if their child's in a high performing school. I don't think that that should be a secret. Everything needs to be transparent to parents and we need to be clear about it. So we need to keep our expectations high for our schools. Absolutely. We need to be very transparent with our parents about exactly where their schools are. Because I can tell you, they're already looking on websites that classify schools these, this way. They, they have a whole bunch of them on the internet and they go and look up schools when they're deciding where to buy a house. So they can pick schools that way. And, and it's going to say there what we're not telling them. And that doesn't go over so big. Transparency is really, really important. So just, just kind of a response as we go back to that. And, um, and thanks for letting me just add a little bit more, Dr. Martin.
Yeah, I think the transparency, you know, that's obviously, we're trying to make database decisions. And of course, sharing that data and having it accessible to the public on it, on a dashboard, which is something that we're starting to populate. Um, that I, I think is important because I, I know I've talked to parents as well. I know we all have that are getting their information from, um, data sources that don't have reliable, um, sources. They're not being populated in any kind of, um, of appropriate methodology. So, um, I'm going to move on to Ms. Bassin. I saw you had your hand up. Do you still have a question or a comment?
Yeah, um, thank you. Um, I, I fully support, um, you know, Mr. Jordan's recommendations and, and recall having all of these conversations, you know, before about having some electronic mechanism for being able to view, um, our accountability plan. And I believe we talked about having some like portal through board docs, um, as a way to, to be able to look at some of that data. Um, I would personally would like for us to come back and talk about our board goals, um, and priorities because, um, I do think a lot has changed. And, um, you know, it's, it's hard to dive into that discussion right now. I do think that that could be something that we talk about in a, in a board retreat coming soon. Um, but I, because, you know, we're, we still have to go through all the STAR data and PALS data. And I think that will also help inform, um, our discussions around goals and priorities. Um, so I, I don't want to get into that there. But, um, you know, equity, equity has to be what is, you know, is not a thing that we're trying to achieve. It has to be how we're going to achieve it. And somehow we have to be able to demonstrate that, know where we are right now and, uh, be able to develop and account, not just our own accountability plan, but a strategic plan, everything that is built around that. And so that's something I, you know, I, I would definitely like to see us move toward. Um, but I just wanted to share my support for, uh, what Mr. Jordan had, had raised. Um, and, and fully support getting to that point where we can, uh, really, uh, dive into the data and look at that and then have it in a place where we can, um, electronically look at it, uh, or for, you know, to be able to access it. So, um, I just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so, um, so thank you, everyone. Uh, I've taken a lot of good notes here. Um, one of the things that we are going to do, um, I was going to say this till later, but, um, since it's on, on topic, uh, we are looking at our retreat being, you know, right after the new year, hopefully, um, you know, late January, early February. And, um, this will be an item where we can take this deeper dive. So that's, that's one of the goals is to take the accountability and, and, and use the discussion from this evening to make those updates as necessary. Um, or, you know, at least have the discussion around it. And, um, but the one piece, I'm looking at some information we don't have to wait till, till then for. Um, definitely if, um, Dr. Poe, if you wouldn't mind sending us the information on the diplomas versus the certificates data that was excluded from the revisions.
So you would like to add the, the row for certificates on there?
Yeah, I, well, I heard, yes, the, the, um, yes.
Okay, we can add that.
Okay. Um, Ms. Bassin, you had your hand up?
I was just going to add the, the advanced and standard diploma information as well. Um, and as I think it was previously indicated to break that down by, um, our subgroups, identified subgroups.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into doing that as well, uh, with that data.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you very much. And, um.
Dr. Martin?
Yes. Dr. Gabriel, or I'm sorry. Dr. Bertong, um, has a item and then I just have a clarifying next step question.
Yeah, and, and that's what I wa-I was going to, my question was around process. Um, I appreciate all of the valuable feedback that we received from all the board members around, you know, moving forward with the school board accountability plan. So I just want, you know, before we leave this meeting, to have a clear understanding what the will of the board is as it relates to what this, you know, you want the document to look like. So we can go ahead and begin working to finalize it sooner than later.
Yeah, so we can continue the discussion. I was, um, okay, um, so going back to my notes, um, um, what, let's, let's start with the discussion around the accountability goal of, um, moving it from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-three. Um, I know Dr. Gabriel and Ms. Campson would like to move it to twenty twenty-three. Mr. Um, Clanton, you seemed a little hesitant to accept that.
Uh, I, I, I'm not into that. I wouldn't say it's a total hesitation. I just wanted to make sure that we we're just kind of looking at it a holistic, kind of like way of, we got a big pandemic going on. And is it, are we setting ourselves up for a goal that, um, may not be achievable because we haven't necessarily assessed everything that's going on? So if they, we can answer that question for me, and I don't know if we can do that here now, but, um, then I might be more in tune to move. But I think twenty twenty-four is, to me, seems kind of reasonable because we don't know if this pandemic will last and we'll be dealing with this into next school year. We, we don't know. Those are a lot of unknown variables.
So the way that I was looking at it, uh, Mr. Clanton, is that I, I understand we're in a pandemic right now. And just like we are, we had a goal of twenty twenty-two, we're here discussing it and we're moving the needle to a different direction to accommodate for that. Fingers crossed, we start the school year off twenty twenty-one, ready to go, in person. Um, that gives us twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. That's a full school year. Then the next school year is twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. That's two full years, two full years that we can, uh, you know, look at, you know, trying to make as, as great a gains as possible. Uh, am I gonna, am I going to, um, be upset, you know, if, if we push it to twenty twenty-four? No, I'll go with the will of the board. But I think that we should strive, strive to go do whatever we can in those two years to, to close those achievement gaps so that maybe we can achieve that for the twenty twenty-three, um, the twenty twenty-three school year. That's my thought. And if we don't do it, I understand, you know, I understand the, the circumstances that we're in. But I think we should always try to push ourselves, you know, as Ms. Campson says, what are our expectations? We need to push ourselves to try to get it, get us to that point. Um, did I see another hand? Ms. Bassin, I thought I saw your hand. Let me see your hand. Okay, um, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Martin, on that one. And I don't know, Dr. Bertong, you can bring clarity for me here. Um, so I guess twenty eighteen, nineteen school year was the first year we were kind of in a test mode with the new accountability plan for the state?
Was the baseline year. That was the baseline year with the, the growth, um, measures as a, as a part of the accountability system at the state level.
So then we, twenty nineteen, twenty, uh, I guess, yeah, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, then we were hit with the, the pandemic, right?
Correct.
So we really have not had a real year, other than, I guess, the, the baseline year, um, to really assess ourselves. I mean, this is why the state is not doing the accreditation, uh, piece. Uh, that, that's my only concern. I just don't feel like we're on even footing, um, to, to place ourselves. And I, I'm all about setting aspirational goals and for us to move towards it. But I'm also kind of looking at the timing and that's one of my other things is trying to identify, not necessarily if it's in the plan here, but I think this is what goes back to what Ms. Bassin and where I may agree. I'm not, I'm not a mind reader, but that these may be some of the priorities and the things that we, we get into address because we don't know, um, what we might be dealing with. Um, you know, we, we, we're, we're doing the very best that we can, but we don't know. So I, I'm not going to die on a hill on it. If we say twenty-three or twenty-four, it's just, that's my concern. I just want to make sure we're on even footing.
Could I add a quick response to that? Traditionally, we look at school turnaround as taking three years. That's, that's kind of a, a national average, three years to turn a school around. That's what you shoot for, three years to turn a school around. This was set up with that, a three-year turnaround. Now, that's why it was not counting the planning year. It was twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. So twenty, we are providing an education for our children, but certainly not at the level that we would like to do. There's nothing that substitutes for person-to-person for our children. But they're not just sitting here going nowhere. But, so we push it and, and we capture the whole year. Another whole year to get us to the three-year typical average turnaround time for a school that's hit the ground and doing all the great things that they need to do to get a school turned around. That's where the three-year turnaround time, year twenty, year twenty-one and year twenty-two came from. It didn't just, you know, it wasn't just pulled out of the sky. It was done for that reason. Um, and that's what was set, that expectation. That's a high expectation, but a reasonable expectation because nationally, three years is considered turnaround for a school.
And, and Dr. Martin, to Ms. Campson, if I may, you just actually answered what my concern is. That takes three years for turnaround. And when we set up that plan, we weren't anticipating a pandemic. Um, there are a lot of different variables that I feel that are in place now that would require us to potentially move this back later. Um, just for the point that we could make those necessary modifications. Students aren't in, uh, we know that all the, the science and everything that tells us is that the best Students aren't in uh we know that all the the science and everything that tells us is that the best place for a child to receive their education is in person in a classroom. But we can't do that right now. We understand that. Uh and we're working. We've had a very long discussion to get us there. But I just think that what you just said about the three years uh just kind of answers what my concern is, is that it's gonna take time. And I just feel like that we we're not necessarily setting ourselves up in 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 a real goal uh in a respect of taking in account for what we're dealing with.
Well, in in a quick response, that's why we're adding the extra year, year twenty three.
It will take more.
To make up for the loss that we're having now. So I you I I'm just, and I was just sharing with you what nationally is used is a three-year turnaround time is an is an average expectation for turning around. And adding that extra year was to do that. So but you know, I appreciate your point of view also.
Um I'd like to ask Ms. Smith, um what are your thoughts about twenty three or twenty four for full accreditation?
I'm in favor of twenty three.
Miss Basin?
Um I I I given given the current state of affairs, I support um Dr. Paul's recommendation with twenty four uh twenty twenty four. And you know, I personally, you know, the the focus on accreditation, I I understand it, and this is our accountability plan. But my biggest concern is around the social and mental well-being of our students and making sure that they have all of the supports in place where we can get to teaching and learning. And I'm I'm telling you, just even based on the last eight months, um that's gonna take up, it's gonna take some time uh to really get our students uh where uh you know, in that place of of really um you know, the focus should always be on academics, but I I think the primary focus for me is on is on that, and it's gonna take time. It's gonna take a lot of time, especially when they're not in person in the classroom. Um there's a lot of research on learning loss, even with all of the efforts in place. Um you know, I'd like to hear more about what we're doing to minimize that in the virtual space going forward. But I think for now, um I think twenty twenty four is a is a more realistic goal. So.
Mr. Jordan, I'd like to hear from you as well.
Um. I I I appreciate um what what Mr. Clanton and Miss Basin had brought forward. Um I'm trying to make sure I say this the right way. Um. Whether it's twenty two, twenty three, or twenty four, I think what the the discussion should be around uh what is it that the administration feels is needed from the board to accomplish it? And so this goes back to my earlier point. I think that I don't I don't want to get lost in um uh too much debate or discussion over what the goal should be on the chart. I think that if it's twenty three, if it's twenty four, the conversation we need to have is where are we now? And what is it going to take to get to where we say we want to, the absolute that we say we want to achieve? And and then have those um discussions uh throughout the year, budget time um about providing the supports that are necessary uh to get to the turnaround. So as Dr. Birdsong, you know, recommended last year, and they have in one of the other reports uh presentations about reading specialists and other staff persons that they've determined need to be in place based upon the assessments that they did in order for us to reach the goal. I just want to see us to have those conversations around providing those supports and resources in an equitable fashion uh so that we can achieve the outcomes, whether it be twenty three or twenty four. So uh I do think that the um the point about high expectations is is real and is important. Also think being realistic uh is important. So I can go either way. I just think what's what we really need to get to the point where the data and the accountability plan informs our actions that we take to to get to where we want to be for individual student learning as well as school outcomes.
Well, um would you agree, though, that it seems my impression would be that since the administration who put a lot of thought into their updates is suggesting twenty twenty four would kind of answer the question around do we have the, you know, resources to meet the twenty twenty three, you know, a sooner deadline that 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 they're saying that this is the time we need to meet these goals under the current circumstances?
So so I didn't interpret it that way. And in 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 the conversation that we have, and I think the perspective that I think Ms. Campson and Dr. Gabriel are bringing, I see this again as the school board's accountability plan. So the school board sets the goal, and then the administration can come back and tell us whether or not they think the goal is realistic or what they need in order to achieve the goal. So.
Yeah.
I appreciate the updates that we've received from Dr. Paul and administration. But ultimately, I think the board is the one that's saying, here's where we want to get to. And then the administration has to be able to say to us, well, if that's what you want us to do, you need to provide us with the following so that we can we can get there.
I mean, to me, I'm I'm thinking that they, my impression is that that they're telling us, you know, twenty twenty four would be be the way to get there. Um and I agree with Mr. Clanton, you know, um and I hear Ms. Ms. with um Ms. Campson about, you know, three years being the turnaround um ju- uh turnaround for uh schools. Um but that, I think, is under normal circumstances. That's why I'm really leaning toward twenty twenty four and I really um. So it seems like we're divided. Um but I I personally want to um give consideration to the recommendations by our administration who are actually in charge of administering um our plan so that we can meet our goals as a board um and as a governance team. So I I'm I'm leaning toward the twenty twenty four, accepting the twenty twenty four recommendation. Um so. I I I mean, we're we're really at a at a standstill. Um.
I mean, I I think it it sounds like it's three to four, so just do it at twenty twenty four. And just like we're doing this year, where we have a pandemic and we pushed it back a year. If we come back next year and Dr. Birdsong says, oh, my gosh, guys, we're making great gains. I think we can push it up, then we change it. Um and and let me just reemphasize again, we're not talking just simple accreditation, checking the box. Accreditation means so much more. It means all of those things that we have all said. It means closing achievement gaps. It means monitoring the data, all of that. So we always have the ability to come back to it. So if it's the will of the board to stay at twenty twenty four, let's do it and let's move on to the next item.
Yeah, and I think that's what I was trying to process was um was that we want wins, you know, we these are deadlines, which means, you know, but there's nothing to stop us from, like you said, achieving them early on. And I just didn't want to don't want to set us up for twenty twenty three and be almost like so close to making it, but we missed it. Um so it would be, it would be great. I mean, obviously, if um if we set the goal for twenty twenty four and we hit it in twenty twenty three and just obviously check a lot of boxes off, as you said, um at the same time. Um so, Dr. Birdsong, do you feel like you've been given the direction? We'll accept the twenty twenty four?
Oh, as it relates to that, yes, to the that specific date, yes.
So I'm just going through some of the changes here. Um and.
Could I just say one thing, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm disappointed. I think that this uh demonstrates to parents that we don't have high expectations for the performance of our children. I think it keeps parents from moving here because our parents are very aware of of where we are with accreditation. We got to the problems that we were with the low accreditation, so many low uh unaccredited schools because of lack of high expectations. Our children can do it. It's whether we, as the educators, have the will to make it happen. And and then I'll just whatever the board decides, but I want to make it very clear that I'm disappointed in the fact that we really don't have the high expectations that we should have for our children, that we can't look for a goal. Goals are not something that are easy. They're something that you're shooting for. You don't pick a goal because you think you can make it. You pick a goal because you know you're gonna have to really, really hard to get it. Thanks for letting me add an extra statement.
Sure. I I just in response to that, my expectations are actually, they remain very high, which is why I I believe that we can achieve this goal. Um and why, you know, but I I also have to be realistic in the um in the uncertainties that lie ahead. And um and I just, you know, I I I don't know how this changes our expectation of academic achievement for our children. I think we've always had high expectations, and I don't think we've wavered on them, despite the fact that we've had to make major changes to our um educational, you know, the way that we're delivering our our um education for to our to our um students and and the work environment for our staff. So um expectations have definitely not been lowered. Uh I, you know, I I'm not hearing anyone saying they're lowering lowering expectations by moving the timeline to a reasonable timeline. Um so, Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
No, I was just, Dr. Birdsong, what what's the status? I know I'm calling you. Based on the new state system, I mean, the accreditation status of all of our schools is what?
So you know, right now accreditation has been waived for this year. And the last time we had SOL assessments, which was during the eighteen nineteen school year, if I recall correctly, sixty seven percent of the schools were fully accredited at that time.
So we're working from that sixty seven percent based on the new guidelines. Um and that's not saying that even though we have a twenty twenty four deadline, we're saying a hundred percent. I think that uh Dr. Gabriel um and someone else mentioned that as well, that if we reach it ahead, I mean, the goal is always to get to a hundred percent. I just think we're saying with that absolute kind of goal was to by twenty twenty four. But um I don't want anybody to walk away. I'm definitely not uh saying that I'm lowering anything. I'm I'm just going for realistic and I want a hundred percent and want us to work towards that, but.
Okay. All right, we'll go with twenty twenty four and um and move on. Um and then in addition, earlier I had said about the Dr. Paul about the adding back the um diplomas and certifications, and of course, the advanced degrees. Um just a reminder that uh the community stakeholder engagement, page thirty five, would need to be updated as well. Um and then adding the SAT ACT passing scores for reference to that chart in the notes field, I think, is what was discussed.
Correct.
On page. Okay, page thirteen, keeping the high and top performing schools on table nine. Is it um it that was about the um sorry, let me go to the second, looking at my notes, which complete.
My notes have to leave that as is with ESSA um as the as the data source for that table nine.
Okay, uh can you repeat that, please?
My notes just had um that as a data source to keep the ESSA data source, but I don't think the board has fully decided on that table not or not.
Right. Yeah, that was at the end of my list, too. Um so so keep, we talked about um. I liked your I liked your uh recommendation and to have both the um the VDOE SOL scores in a separate table than the ESSA scores, but I can open that up again to conversation on about how do we feel about that recommendation?
Are we talking about table nine, the high performance schools, or are we talking about the ESSA items? I thought we were just talking about table nine on page thirteen.
ESSA pass rates for the high performing schools.
Yes, Dr. Gabriel, those are ESSA because ESSA is the actual pass rate, what percentage of your children passed. It's the same thing.
Okay. So. There was some discussion about taking the um the ESSA rates out of the accountability plan, which we would be a revision or keeping them in.
I think I kind of made it clear as to how I felt about it. Keep them in.
I mean, I can see how this can be confusing because if this table nine is based on ESSA data and and we're we have so much data populated here based on SOLs. And you know, we're saying SOLs now, but we don't even know what is going to happen in, you know, two years if they keep SOLs as they are. But let's just say they are. I can see how, you know, this might be confused with, you know, is this is this uh ninety percent or above in reading and math for SOLs or is this with ESSA? But this is for reading and math based on the SOLs, right? Uh, Dr. Birdsong or Ms. Campson?
Uh, the ESSA scores are simply for giving you money. The feds want to make sure you're getting your kids to a certain level. So the ESSA scores are the actual pass rates for accreditation. Now, we're using growth, how much the kids grow, we're using how much they close achievement gaps. ESSA is nothing else but just, these are the actual pass rates that school had. This school had ninety percent pass uh kids pass English and they had ninety percent of the kids pass reading. That's it's that's all it is. It isn't, it isn't interfering with anything else.
Okay.
If 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 we don't, if we move this back to something else, then I mean, it just becomes the same as the exempt award that the state's giving for the growth. The state's already awarding that. This is a different award. It's based on how many students are, this is the proficiency award as opposed to the growth. If we look at the um state award, exempt award, whatever, it's looking at how much growth you have, which is an extremely valuable information to have because that's a lot of hard work to get that growth in. And then the um NPS award is looking at how many schools, how many students are proficient. It's a proficiency award. So we're recognizing the level of proficiency in one. We're recognizing the level, well, the state is recognizing the level of growth in the other. So if you if you do them both the same, then you might as well just toss it out.
But if we're, then if we're if we're tracking growth by um keeping the state standards in, we're gonna reach the S the federal standards, so right? And then that would be.
Well, we would hope they grow enough, they'll they will reach it. Yeah, it that's it's kind of like on the way there. If they keep the growth is, what you're doing is you're measuring how much, how many the percentage of kids that that improved at a certain degree, which is very important. That's the whole foundation of it all. And basically, the before of the the high academic performance is based on the schools that have reached that or the not the schools themselves, but the children, after we work on this, this is where they should all be headed. It simply lets us know that these schools in the in the ninety, it's a ninety school is what they call them elsewhere, a ninety school. Because ninety percent of the kids are proficient. It's a it's it's looking at how many of your kid, you know how many growth you have from the other one? This is telling you how many children are proficient in grade level materials. They're proficient, they're they're performing at grade level. And that's what it's recognizing. It's not a different standard or measurement. The state's always looking at the percentage of kids that are proficient. It's that doesn't change. You either pass the test, you meet the level, you may score four hundred or better on the test or you're done.
Dr. Birdsong, does you have anything to add? No, okay.
No, we we provided our recommendation.
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel, any other questions?
Um I say we keep the the table. I'm okay if we put it in an appendix so it's not as confusing when they're reading the accountability plan, but I definitely think we should keep the table.
Okay. Miss Basin? How do you feel about um, well, how do you feel about ESSA? I like the idea of keeping it in with an ended as an appendix, just.
I'm I'm fine with that.
Okay, um any objection from Mr. Jordan or Ms. Smith or any comments? Okay, so we'll keep the ESSA data in as an appendix then. And. okay, is, is there anything I'm missing here that you also need clarification on?
Timeline, right? What are next steps?
Okay, then the next steps would be, um, as I mentioned earlier, the updates based on our meeting. And then, um, we plan to take a, you know, more of a data dive at, on our, at our, um, at our retreat, our mid-year retreat, which those details are being planned out. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Let's see. All right, and next on our agenda, we have our student enrollment data.
This is Madam Chair Martin. Dennis Fuddy is here with us this afternoon or this evening, and he is happy to, to facilitate this discussion with the board.
Okay, great.
Fuddy?
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Martin and the School Board. I want to take a few minutes and walk through, hopefully you can hear me, walk through some enrollment information. Karen, would you, next slide? I want to talk about two, uh, topics and two pieces of information. You notice that there's a timeline that we report to the state September thirtieth. That's the official date, the cutoff date, but the actual date for the final submission is usually at the end of October and that report has been submitted to the state. There's two terms that I want to talk about responsible versus serving school. Responsible school is, are those schools that have, uh, SOLs and information reported to the state. Serving school, on the other hand, are locations that are not reported to the state for SOLs attendance or other pieces of information. Examples of a serving school would be Rosemont. All of those students' SOL scores go back to their home zone school. So that's the difference between responsible versus serving school. The other key date in here is March thirty-first, and that's when the district reports the average daily membership throughout the school year up to that point. And that figure, that data is used, uh, by the state for funding for the, uh, district. The information for September is enrollment. The information on March thirty-first is average daily membership. And then you also see the timeline there for enrollment projections. Next slide. Here we've listed a few of the, uh, possible things that do impact enrollment for the district. This list is not necessarily completely, um, inclusive, but I would notice that the big one this year is the last one, COVID nineteen. Uh, but all of these things can various, um, pieces impact, um, projections and therefore then enrollments. Next slide. Here is the breakdown of the last two years of enrollment. The projection that was done back in February, the projection was done before any of the COVID or shutdown impact could be looked at. Notice that the, um, secondary levels are pretty close to projection. However, the elementary is a little bit further off than what we normally would expect or want. The reason is, and we'll see that in the upcoming slides, are that the younger children have not shown up or are not attending the school, primarily kindergarten and first grade. Also, pre-K enrollment is way below what we had initially, uh, projected. Um, so these are the, the numbers and, uh, you see with and without pre-K. Next slide. Here is the grade breakdown of the projection versus enrollment. You can see what I mentioned just a second ago. That kindergarten is way under what was projected. First grade is, um, not quite as bad. The other grades up to grade nine are pretty close to what was projected. Now notice on the high school that there, there's some substantial differentiate, difference, differentiation between projection and enrollment. And, and the grade levels at high school are due to verified credits. So as Dr. Poll had mentioned earlier, a lot of those were this year gra- granted locally. So, um, take that with a little grain of salt, that ninth grade was way under projection, but you noticed the tenth, eleventh grade were a little bit higher. So overall, the numbers at high school are about what was projected to be. Next slide. Here's a five-year, uh, graph of, uh, district with and without pre-K. Notice that we're continuing, the district is continuing to decline. It has, uh, all the years that I've been done, we're doing roll-in projections declined unfortunately. Uh, and that's expected to probably continue unless there's some substantial changes in demographics or other things that would cause enrollment to go up. Next slide. And here's the breakdown from the following graph by level. Notice that it's interesting that the middle grades have been very stable. In fact, it's gone up a little bit, which is a little surprising because the perception is like of a number of people are that kids leave, uh, the middle grades and then come back for high school. High school's gone down a little bit, but you can see the, the rather notable drop in, in elementary. And that's due, this year due to in large part the COVID impact of first grade, as we saw earlier kindergarten. Next slide. And here are five years of the enrollment by grade level. And again, you notice the substantial drops in kindergarten and first grade and less or so in the other grades. Next slide. And questions? Comments?
Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Fuddy. You, you, you talked to this a little bit about students leaving in middle school and then returning for high school. Uh, can you talk a little bit more about that and what are we doing as a district to mitigate that? When I look at this chart, I'm looking at, or I see kind of steady K through three-ish. Then you start seeing the decline. Then the spike in ninth grade is what you were saying about verified credits. But then grades ten, eleven and twelve, and I'm looking at the five-year average. We're seeing another significant decline. What's impacting that, uh, our students leaving? Does it have, leaving in terms of going to other districts? Um, is it the dropout rate? What's actually driving what we're seeing here? And then what are we doing as a district to mitigate that?
That was about five questions, wasn't it? That's not just one question. I noticed I said the perception. I have not looked at that recently, but I know that for example, um, programs such as Young Scholars, international programs at Rosemont is all sixth, seventh and eighth grade. They were set up that way years ago to keep those kids and give them an opportunity for academic challenges to keep those kids in middle grades. Also, there is a middle grade specialty program at Blair. And also the other thing is that ADL was structured so that also for the same reason you mentioned, to keep kids within, uh, Norfolk, to give them choice. There are kid, there are students that come into ADL at the middle grade level. Um, other than what's keeping them here, I'd have to refer to Dr. Poll. Now, it's to specifically answer your question, that would require a little bit more work in looking at where, if kids have actually dropped out, uh, what the dropouts of where they've gone. Uh, I haven't seen anything substantial, but I can put something together, but it, we can look at that. Dr. Poll?
Uh, Mr. Fuddy, I would agree. I, I, that would be something to have to research a little bit further, Ms. Smith. I don't have that information off the top of my head for the enrollment patterns.
Yeah, but you see that huge drop. It's like the slope is going down from nine through twelve. So are we having some kind of hangup in the ninth grade that?
But could I, and then I'll refer to Dr. Poll. I know that a number of years ago, the issue was that for, uh, one of the challenges for students to progress through to high school were that they were being challenged to complete, uh, Algebra I. And it was a semester's course. So a couple of years ago, the decision was to move that to a year-long course so that the students then with the thought would be that the students could then more successfully transmit, trans, trust, transcend up into the, the higher grades. And I believe that, I'll, again, I'll ask Dr. Poll on that. I believe that that's what you're seeing there because you're seeing an increase at tenth grade and you're also seeing an increase at eleventh grade. So when I look at this chart and the information, that's what it's suggesting to me. So, Dr. Poll?
It, it, again, you know, I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to research the data a little bit further, uh, to give you a solid answer. I see what you're talking about, Ms. Smith. That, it looks like the trend goes nine, ten, eleven, and a little bit of a growth in twelve. Some could be attributed to dropout rate, but we don't have a, a, a huge dropout rate in Norfolk. Uh, this is some, you know, it, it could be attributed to a, a whole bunch of variables and I, I just wouldn't feel comfortable giving a solid answer at this point on why we're seeing that kind of a trend. I do apologize for not having it on my fingertips.
Well, I, I would like for us to have a follow-up on that. Um, I think it's important for us to know what's happening when, when this type of information is presented to us. I think it's important for us to know what's behind the presentation. And if there's something that we need to do as a district to improve upon that.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Basine? And then Mr. Clayton, did you have your hand up? Yes, okay, you next.
Um, yeah. Oh. What's, did you want to go ahead, Mr. Clayton?
I was saying I could have my hand up. You can go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, so, real quick, so it looks like based on the first, let's see, slide number four. So am I reading this correctly? There's about, the drop in pre-K enrollment is about five hundred and eighty-two?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
Probably if they drop, yeah, that's, uh, when, when I do pre-K projections, the Weldon Cooper Center recommended that we use the previous year's enrollment account for pre-K because there's no way to estimate that. So that was the number of, of children that were enrolled as of September thirtieth last year. So yeah, you are correct.
Okay, so that's a drop of five hundred and eighty-two. And do we know, uh, why that drop is occurring in that, at that grade level?
So for pre-K enrollment, we, across our region, we've seen drops equal to this or more significant than this because of COVID. Where, where parents are either opting to keep their young ones home or they're doing private daycare because they, we don't have a face-to-face opt-in for our pre-K students. Um, it hasn't been uncommon across the region. I will let you know that I've been working with, um, the Title I Early Learning Department around developing a strategic plan for, um, advertisement enrollment as we go into the new enrollment season, um, so that we're looking to circumvent and, uh, a loss like this, uh, again, and to, and to show the growth that we need to be showing in Norfolk.
Okay, yeah, I, I have, I, I have heard that happening, you know, even across the country, uh, that seeing, uh, you know, some of that, the pre-K drop and especially I think we, for those of us that were, um, participated in the Council of Great City Schools Conference, I know some districts were talking about that, um, specifically. Um, okay, well, thank you for that. So and the other thing, Mr. Fuddy, um, if I heard correctly, so the other big drops that we saw was in the first, I mean kindergarten and first grade. And I think, uh, you know, I heard something about them not showing up. Is that, that they haven't physically withdrawn from our school division or how is that, um, enrollment being determined?
Well, kindergarten kids in most cases would not have been enrolled in the district unless they attended the pre-K, uh, the year before. And, and significant number of the kindergarten kids do not attend the pre-K the year before. Uh, so maybe Dr. Poll, but they just did not enroll this year.
Okay.
Again, as he said, that you're seeing this across the district, uh, across other districts, that kindergarten is down.
Okay, and would that, would that be true for first?
I was just gonna say, we, we feel pretty confident it's based on COVID nineteen and, and parents opting to keep their children at home.
Okay, so there's no correlation with, um, children who aren't logging on per se. This is based on actual enrollment. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear because when I heard the show, the showing up piece, I just, uh, wanted to, uh, confirm the methodology, uh, being used here. Um, okay, um, you know, and then when I think about next steps, what, what you want us to glean from this, um, you know, I, I would like to hear that. Uh, you know, a, as you said, you know, people, parents are making other choices based on what we're, uh, you know, the decisions that we're, we make about face-to-face versus virtual and what the needs of their families are. Um, so my question to you is, what is, what are some takeaways? What, are there any recommendations? Um, that, that the administration is bringing forward to us based on this enrollment data or, um?
It's basically for your information and, and we do know as, uh, Dr. Poll pointed out, especially in the area of pre-K, we, we realize that we need a more robust plan moving forward to, um, really identify and work with and communicate with parents, um, who are interested in our program. Um, we do believe that we can increase, um, our enrollment in pre-K and, and so our efforts right now will be to focus on developing that plan so that we can, um, mitigate some of, you know, these enrollment issues for next year.
Okay. One of my recommendations.
And although it is like regionally, nationally, across the state, it's a concern, but we're still taking it very seriously and, and believe there are some things that we can do to be more proactive.
Okay, well, I look forward to hearing, uh, some more about that plan in the future and what we can do and whether, um, you know, when I look at this, I mean, the ninth grade enrollment data concerns me and, you know, our elementary grade levels also concern me. And, you know, what comes to mind is, you know, enrollment changes based on perception of how we are able to meet their academic needs and whether at some point, you know, when health conditions allow, if we can start to bring back, you know, students at that, at our youngest grade levels and that ninth grade, you know, those transition years, um, are really important, especially ninth grade, where we know that that can, uh, you know, can be an indicative year for future dropouts. Um, so, so, you know, I just, that's what's, you know, in my mind as I look at this enrollment data. So I just wanted to share, share that with all of you. Um, but anyway, I think, um, I, I heard somebody else.
Oh, that was just, I was just saying, one of the things that, um, that, uh, I've brought up before about the pre-K increasing our enrollment is the fact that a lot of people don't even know that public schools offer pre-K and to start looking at advertising it in the family, um, local family magazines and journals where other pre-K programs are being advertised. So those are the go-to sources. For, you know, identifying what those go-to sources are when, when families are exploring pre-K options and making sure that NPS is part of, you know, um, heard of that advertising or is, is included. Um, Mr. Clayton, go ahead.
I have any questions, Dr. Martin?
Oh, you don't? Okay, I'm sorry. Any more, uh, questions or comments, um, concerning the enrollment data presentation? Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think I may have missed the, the explanation for the, the ninth grade drop. I think it was like we were down five hundred students or so from, from last year. What, what was, can you say again what the thought is why we had that, that drop for ninth grade?
Well, if you look at Well, if you look at increased at 10th and 11th grade. And that would be due to verified credits. So the grade levels at high school are verified credits. I'd have to look a lot further. To see why there's substantial drop at ninth grade. But you notice that there's an increase at 10th and 11th grade. That's just kind of a little bit unexpected. And of course, there is some of, some of it could be the COVID that the ninth graders didn't show up. That were enrolled last year in the eighth grade. But I'd have to do as Dr. Paul said, we have to do some further analysis to look at that.
Yeah, I was, there was a. Email that that we received that also showed the enrollment membership. And I was just looking from the. 1920 year compared to the. 2021 year. I'm just trying to make sure I'm still understanding. So if somebody. If they were enrolled last year and we see the drop in ninth grade this year, then that means they have completely exited. Norfolk Public Schools as far as we know.
Even better, they went to the 10th grade.
Right, but we're able, aren't we able, we can identify the. The students that we had last year and students that we still have this year and be clear on. Whether or not they're still in Norfolk Public Schools or not, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I think is the the meaningful piece. And then a question on the pre-K. Is pre-K enrollment? Uh, available at any point in time during the year or is it only during a specific point in time?
We, we keep open enrollment, especially right now. We, we have open enrollment. If any family still wants to enroll their child in pre-K, we. Will accept them with open virtual arms.
Yeah, so you know, I would. Ask us to consider, um. You know, I look forward to whatever plan that you all may working on if it's something that gets presented to us or not. Uh, but some folks know, so I cried when, uh, when we had the the pre-K drop. And, um. And then now paying attention also to the. 400 students in kindergarten missing. You know, as we were just talking earlier about preparing students for. For success. Uh, even in this virtual environment, it would seem that. You know, with, uh, with our pre-K center excellence and, you know, Norfolk was the school division in the region. That started full-time pre-K. Uh, where others, some others are still trying to get there. So I think for us to have that level of drop, I do believe it's probably. Pandemic related. But more so around. People not knowing whether or not schools were going to be open or not. But to me, the same way that folks were willing to knock on doors for, uh. Uh, election campaigns, uh, you know, folks ought to be willing to. To knock on doors for our, uh. Pre-K and kindergarten enrollment. Uh, because I think it's just, just that important. So. You know, if the January timeframe allows us to. Uh, do another effort around, um. Trying to get folks to enroll in pre-K even as we are not yet in person, I would just encourage us to. To do any short-term things that we can do as well as any long-term. Uh, efforts we may do as part of our planning.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I actually have a question and, um. I'm happy to have, I'm glad to have the opportunity asked it here. Do we actually know or do you actually know what our market share of school-aged children is? I saw, you know, on the first slide, I think you have a list of reasons that external reasons. For why our enrollment is what it is and one of them is private schools. So I'm just wondering if we actually know. What our market share is for here in Norfolk.
Uh, I don't have that number. Uh, what, what happens is the Center, Weldon Cooper Center from the University of Virginia does. A enrollment projections of school-aged children for all of the localities throughout the state of Virginia. And and they use that for tax dispersion for all local districts. So they estimate all of the school-aged children. Um, I don't recall what that number is. I can get that and send it up to you. And it's just an estimate unless we're around you unless you have the actual numbers.
No, I was just going to say that, uh, kind of going back to the accountability plan, one of the reasons that we. Entered into the work with the educational planning cooperative strategies we do have. And typically, uh. I think Mr. Fuddy will provide it maybe in the February timeframe when March, somewhere in this later in the year. We do know, um, live in, um, you know, who's living in the city versus who's enrolled. In the cities. I think we do have looked at that data in the, in the past. If that's what's being asked.
I, yes, I have that data from their report last spring.
Right.
They, they would be, are going to repair, prepare a report in this coming spring.
Yeah, because part of our goal was in terms of being competitive and knowing that information was so that we could see. Uh, school-aged children in Norfolk and those who are enrolled in, um. Norfolk Public Schools and it was mentioned earlier about the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. What really was much broader where we did say we wanted to have, um. Social economically diverse learning environments because we thought it was academic basis for that. We thought more choice options would also be attractive to families. We talked about mixed income pre-K. So all those things came back to that overarching. Uh, effort to, uh, to be competitive based upon what the data was telling us.
Okay, yeah, I'll provide that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fuddy. Um, okay, moving on to our next agenda item on, um. We have a presentation on our Star Reading and Math Assessment results. From this fall.
Thank you, Madam Chair Martin. Dr. Paul will be presenting. Um, the results from our Star Reading and Mathematics Assessments from the Fall Administration. Um, we have several slides, more than you probably wanted, but we wanted to make sure. That we were very transparent and clear and sharing the data with you. And just know that we will not be going through every single slide, but certainly where, as I see Mr. Jordan smiling, we're not going to go through every slide. Um, but we did want to provide you the, the information so that we could be clearly transparent in, in, in providing those results to you. So without further ado, Dr. Paul.
All right, thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Um, and I do apologize. Sometimes when I get data in my hand, I get a little carried away and I'll start to pare these down a little bit if I need to. Uh, but good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, Dr. Birdsong and members of the board. I'm here this evening to share data and information pertaining to the Fall Administration of Star Assessments and with me this afternoon or evening. Are Ms. Letitia Wade Jenkins and Ms. Kathy Capel to assist me in the presentation. Norfolk Public Schools administers the Star Reading Assessment in grades two through eight in all of our schools and this year we included English nine across the division. The data from this assessment allows teachers, the data allowed teachers to assess students' reading comprehension. Overall reading achievement and a wide range of skills that are aligned to state and national curriculum standards. We also administer the Star Math Assessment to all students in grades two through eight. And beginning this year, all students in Algebra One and Geometry, Star Algebra and Geometry Assessment. Data from this assessment provides feedback to teachers and administrators regarding the student's mathematical ability. Additionally, NPS administers the Early Literacy Assessment to students in eight of our schools in PK one. But you'll know, we didn't, we were not sharing the data on this since it is only eight of our schools. We'll mention a little bit about that data at the end of the presentation though. NPS uses Renaissance Star as a university screener. The testing window for grades two through nine is three times a year, fall, winter and spring. In addition to grade level star math, there's also Algebra One and Geometry as we talked about. Um, and for the first time across the division during the school year, students in grades six through eight. And high school took those assessments as well. And for the first time this year, we had the English nine assessment for our grade nine students for reading. So STAR is a computer adaptive test that will adjust the level, if you can pick one more time, Ms. Tanner, sorry about that. That will adjust the level of difficulty depending on a student's answer. Uh, from the number of items the student answers correctly and how difficult those items were, the student receive a scaled score. Um, for Star Reading and Math, which range from zero to 1400. Other data and information from STAR Assessments include domain scores, which are an estimate of a student's mastery of each domain for the student's grade level. Percentile rank, which is a norm reference score that provides a measure of a student's ability compared to other students in the same grade nationally. The percentile scores rank, uh, the percentile rank score, which ranges from one to 99. Indicates the percentage of other students nationally who obtained scores equal to or lower than the score of a particular student. For example, if we have a student with a percentile ranked score of 85. They performed as well as or better than 85% of other students in the same grade level. Next is the instructional reading level. This is a criterion reference score that is the highest reading level in which a student is 80% proficient or higher. At comprehending material. And the math instructional level, the student's current level of math instruction. Next is the SGP or the Student Growth Percentile, which compares a student's growth to that of his or her academic peers nationally. SGP's range from one to 99 and expected SGP for each student is between 35 and 60 points. And finally, the Grade Equivalent Norm Reference Score. This score represents how a student's test performance compares with that of other students nationally and is based off the percentile rank score. This afternoon, we'll begin with the reading data. For today's presentation, we'll be focusing on the percentile rank scores of our students. This gives us a true comparison of how our students performed against all other students taking the STAR Assessments. As we begin to look at the data, based on research from the Northwest Evaluation Association or NWEA. There, there was an expectation of a COVID slide as compared to the normal summer slide that students usually see with their learning. This presentation compares fall data from 2019 administration to the 2020 data. Of the, the assessment that students just took and it assists us in knowing which students have higher needs. The usual trend comparisons made with the STAR data must consider the school closure from March 13th. Through the end of last year and the fact that our students are learning in a virtual setting this year. When using the percentile rank, we feel this gives us the best comparison data. This slide shows data from the Fall Administration from 1920 on the left with the Fall Administration from this year on the right. The green bars represent where students at are at or above the benchmark. The blue bars represent students who are at or on the watch level. Yellow bars are students who need an intervention. And the red bars represent students who urgently need an intervention. The grade levels start from grade two at the top and go down to grade nine at the bottom. And again, since this is the first year where all ninth grade students were administered the Star Reading Assessment in. Non-honors English classes, the 2021 data would be considered baseline data for those ninth grade students. And as the data shows, all grade levels except for grade two and eight have seen a decrease in the at or above benchmark level. The following eight slides, which I'll go through rather quickly. And focus on the percentile rank scores with the focus on gap groups. By focusing on gap groups, this will assist in identifying any equity and opportunity students from this set of data. This slide is from our grade two data. The top bar again represents all students and going down the slide, the bars represent Asian students. Black students, economically disadvantaged students, English learners, Hispanic students, multi-race students. Students with disabilities and white students. As with the last slide, the colors represent the, um. At or above benchmark, the watch list, need of intervention or urgent intervention. As you see here, our EL students and students with disabilities have the largest gaps followed by our black and economically disadvantaged students. This slide represents the grade three data. Just briefly, here, we're focused on our EL students and students with disability with the largest gaps, followed by our black, Hispanic and economically disadvantaged students. The next slide is grade four. Um, nearly the same as seen here, our EL students and students with disabilities have the largest gap. Followed by our black, Hispanic and economically disadvantaged students. Slide, the next slide has grade five data and again, our EL and students with disability have the largest gaps while our black, Hispanic and economically disadvantaged students. Follow right behind them. The next slide has grade six data and our EL students and students with disabilities have the largest gaps as well. The next slide is grade seven data and our, again, our students with disability have the largest gaps. Um, and then we have our EL students, black students and economically disadvantaged students. The next slide is grade eight data. And again, with our students with disability have the largest gaps and then the black, yellow and economically disadvantaged students. And finally, the slide represents grade nine data. Um, as stated earlier, that's our first year for this, to be offered to non-honors English nine students across the division. And here we see our largest black gap groups are with our EL students and our students with disabilities. The next four slides represent longitudinal data with a three-year cohort. Looking at third grade, it's the third grade cohort at the bottom of this slide. The data started with 75 first grade students who took STAR in the Early Literacy Assessment. That group then became a part of the 2013 students, or 2013 students who took the, the grade two STAR Reading Assessment. Then that same group moved up to be a third grade, took the third grade STAR Reading Assessment. As can be seen on the slide, there was a drop from grade two to grade three, which most likely represents that COVID slide as mentioned in the NWEA research. On the next slide, again, this shows the, for grades four and five and we see a. A small decline from three to four and from two to three, but then a little bit larger decline coming into this year. Uh, with the COVID slide. The next slide, we'd see a drop in proficiency for our sixth grade students. Um, with little and no changes for our seventh grade students. However, I did notice the change from fifth to sixth, there was a drop in that cohort. And finally, this shows the consistency from grade six to seven. Um, for our eighth graders with a small drop coming into this year. Based on the data collected this year, there are three areas of implications and next steps. Looking at the data from the Early Literacy Assessment, given it eight of our highest need schools. The data indicate 44% of kindergartners and 27% of first graders at those schools are not ready for kindergarten. Therefore, once we have the PALS data and it, we will closely compare it with the STAR data from these schools to see what the implications are. Additionally, a focus on foundational reading skills across the division will be on daily phonemic awareness lessons for teachers. To use during whole group and small group lessons based on student need. The first grade phonics curriculum includes daily scripted lessons for teachers along with all resources to implement. And whole group instructional lessons. Additionally, a student addition for every first grader in the district based on these lessons has been created. With the decline in reading proficiency in grades three through seven, students need additional time and text and reading. Making thinking visible while reading or using text in as the annotation and responding to daily. Responding daily to what students are reading is a key aspect to instructional practice. The secondary textbook, My Perspectives, is a great resource for teachers to use virtually. And professional development continues on asynchronous Wednesdays for best practices in using the textbook line. Students are also able to access eBooks, great literature and annotate in the student addition of textbook. Finally, as seen in the data with urgent intervention levels increasing from grades four through eight. English Curriculum Office is providing specific professional development to build lessons on foundational reading skills. At each level to support student growth. They're also working with principals and teachers on data analysis protocols to ensure focus on data-driven lesson development. The English Curriculum Office is providing assistance and professional development to teachers to reach student scoring within each band of scores on the STAR Reading Assessment. From students who scored at or above benchmark, the students who need urgent intervention, opportunities are being developed and provided for teachers to use. To engage all NPS students. From enrichment opportunities to specific skill sets where remediation is needed. Teachers are working with their data and resources provided to assist with raising the floor data and the ceiling data at the same time. We'll now move on to the math data set. One more slide, Ms. Tanner. As with the reading data, this slide shows data from the Fall Administration during the 1920 school year on the left and the Fall Administration from this school year on the right. Since this is the first year where the high school students in Algebra One and Geometry were administered the STAR reading, STAR math assessment. In those content areas, the 2021 data would be considered baseline data for our ninth grade students. Additionally, the ninth grade group in the right column represents students in Algebra One and Geometry. For the math data, there was growth in grades two, seven and eight in the percentage of students scoring at or above the benchmark. Again, the following seven slides on percentile rank scores by grade level with a focus on cap groups. This slide is from our grade two data. As a reminder, the top bar represents the students going down a slide. They represent Asian, black, socioeconomic disadvantaged. English learners, Hispanic, multi-race, students with disabilities and white students. As seen here, our students with disabilities have the largest caps followed by our black EL and economically disadvantaged students. This slide represents grade three data and as seen here, our students with disabilities and EL students have the largest caps followed by our black and economically disadvantaged students. This slide represents grade four data and as seen here, our students with disabilities have the largest gaps followed by our EL and economically disadvantaged students. This slide is grade five data and it's seen here, our students with disabilities have the largest gaps followed by our black EL and economically disadvantaged students. This slide represents grade six data and our students with disabilities have the largest gaps followed by our black and economically disadvantaged students. This slide is grade seven data and as seen here, our students with disabilities again have the largest gaps. The next slide has is grade eight data and as seen here, our students with disabilities have the largest gap followed by our EL students. The next four slides represent longitudinal data with a three-year cohort. Here we see a significant increase for our second graders. However, recall the first grade test only had a total of forty-four students because it. Was included in the early literacy test in our eight schools. For the third graders, there's a slight decrease from last year to this year. For grades four and five, notice the same slight drop in proficiency from last year to this year. Again, for grades six and seven, the same drop in proficiency from last year to this year. And finally, for grade eight, we have the same drop. Similar to the English curriculum office, the math office is focusing on implications and next steps from the star early literature data, which has approximately five numeracy questions included. Over fifty percent of the students in those eight schools who took this assessment performed below the benchmark. As a reminder, this is only with the highest, our eight, eight of our highest need schools and using this data gives us a focus to review curriculum. And resources for division-wide use that have a greater focus on number sense and numeracy skills. Next steps for our first grade students include an emphasis on developing a strong foundation of number and number sets. This is done daily, even virtually by using number sense routines. And explicit instruction based on kindergarten and first grade skills. With the decline seen in proficiency from grades three through six, the math office is facilitating professional development for principals and teachers on virtual instruction. With a focus on engagement in math. They're also facilitating PLC meetings with teachers and using data to drive planning. With the increase in urgent intervention levels, the math office will be extending their professional development and coaching to include the use of progress monitoring tools. From the video we am star facilitating RTI focuses on alignment interventions and hosting additional PLCs to support. Specifically grades four, five and six teachers. The math office is also focusing on supporting all students through providing next steps within each score band for teachers to use from enrichment activities for students. And at or above the benchmarks to additional tutoring and personalized plans for students in need of urgent intervention. In order to best assist principals and teachers with data use, STAR provides a variety of reports for district administrators. School administrators and teachers. One of the most widely used reports by districted school administrators as well as teachers is the screening report. This report quickly graphs and identifies students placement based on their most recent star assessment. And it helps to identify those students who are having difficulty reaching benchmarks. This also helps to create and monitor intervention plans. The STAR instructional planning report provides a list of recommended skills for individualized instruction based on the class. Class's most recent assessment. Next slide, please, Ms. Tanner. This report also identifies the focus skills which are the most critical skills to learn in each grade. And one more slide. Similar to the instructional planning class report, the student report drills down to the student level and provides a list of recommended skills for individualized instruction based on students' most recent assessment activity. And finally, new this year from STAR is a website that educators can access to view all of the focus skills identified for each grade level. One for literacy and one for math. Skills most critical to learn and master are broken down by grade level and are aligned to the Virginia SOLs. I would now like to turn the presentation over to the two voices from the field, starting with the proud principal of Lake Taylor High School. Ms. Latisha Wade Dinkins, followed by the proud principal of Norview Elementary School, Ms. Kathy Cable. Ms. Wade Dinkins?
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Good evening to our school board chair, Dr. Martin. Our vice chair, Mr. Jordan, school board members and our superintendent, Dr. Birdsong. I am Latisha Wade Jenkins, the proud principal of Lake Taylor High School, home of the mighty Titans. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share how we are using STAR. To assess our students and develop instructional plans to meet their needs. We've been using STAR at Lake Taylor High School for several years. With our students who are not successful with passing their eighth grade math assessment. As well as our collaborative English non-students. In math, teachers use the baseline data to determine the concepts and skills that students have not mastered from middle school. Teachers developed support plans for students. And use other online programs such as iXL and Khan Academy. To build the prerequisite skills that students need to be successful in the course. While working on teaching students Algebra One course content. Students also received additional support by working in small groups with their teachers during the instructional day. After school and during Saturday sessions. Teachers analyze the mid-year testing results as well as the end of the year testing results to compare growth. And to revise instructional support plans for students based on their needs. This year in math, we're using STAR to assess students in both Algebra One and geometry. And to develop support plans for them. Teachers are also creating daily math reviews based on the data from the STAR assessments. In English, in previous years, our co-teachers use the data reports. To work with students in their English support classes as well as their collaborative classes. This year, all English nine teachers are using the data from STAR. To tier our students and to identify students who are at or above the benchmark. Those and also those students who need intervention and those who need urgent intervention. We are also using it to develop our students' progress goals. That will be reevaluated at the mid-year point as well as the end of the year. At Lake Taylor High School, we recognize the importance of making sure that our tier one instruction is sound. And we also understand the importance of using diagnostic tools. Such as STAR to determine student strengths and deficits so that we can develop the appropriate plan. Of acceleration and support for them. Consequently, we've seen great results with our students. Not only as a school as a whole, but also with our equity and our opportunity students. In math, our SOL pass rate improved from a fifty, from fifty-two percent of our students scoring proficient in two thousand and eighteen. To seventy-six scoring proficient in two thousand and nineteen. Our students with disabilities increased from thirty-two percent scoring proficient in two thousand and eighteen. To seventy-five percent scoring proficient in two thousand and nineteen. Our economically disadvantaged students increased from scoring forty-seven percent. Proficient to two, in two thousand and eighteen to seventy-six score proficient in two thousand and nineteen. And in English and reading, our students with disabilities increased from fifty-one percent of our students scoring proficient. In two thousand and eighteen to fifty-nine percent scoring proficient. STAR is one of several data points that has helped us to move student achievement forward at Lake Taylor High School. It is a great assessment tool for our teachers. Students are familiar with using this program in elementary and middle. We're excited that we have this great resource available to us at the high school level. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Cable.
Good evening. All right, now we get an elementary perspective. So I just wanted to kind of share what Norview Elementary does with the data and the star testing. So for us, we give the star test quarterly. So the beginning of every quarter, we give the test because I like the extra data point. And then after the test, you know, in elementary school, we celebrate everything. So we celebrate growth. So the, after each test, we sit down with the students and we look at their. Score to the previous test. So for example, if it had been two months. That means from the previous test, you had to at least grow two months in order to earn a prize. So really just pushing that growth and not necessarily if you're at your grade level, because I feel like. That's how we're closing those achievement gaps and especially with our students with disabilities. So the good thing is that students are aware of their scores, the teachers discuss it with them, they discuss what they did well on, what they need to work on. And we also do the individual reports that Dr. Paul shared. They're great to share with parents. So not only it shows them how they can provide extra support at home, but also how to provide enrichment. Maybe they were ahead and they just had one little thing to cover and then that'll continue to push them even further. The instructional planning sheet that he shared for the classroom planning is big for our teachers. It screens everybody, it put tiers them in groups. And then it even gives you the group what they did poorly on or what they need more help with, you know, so then that way. We can teach it and we can bring those strategies into our guided reading and our guided math. And my favorite report is the SOL report. Which means that if we were to give the SOL test that day when they took the test, it would give us. An approximate number of who would pass. And it's been pretty well aligned and so it tells us, okay. What students may have some testing anxieties because they're reading really well, but then when it comes down to the test, they may. Need, you know, some strategies to kind of help them over the, you know, to do well because you get worried and you have, may have some anxiety about the test. So that is really how we use at Norview Elementary is just celebrate, celebrate, celebrate. And that way it just keeps you motivated and it keeps everybody happy. And our second graders were so excited this year because now they get to be part of our prize wagon that comes around. So you know, you don't get it until second grade. So. Next quarter, we will have to figure out how we would do it virtually because I will drive around Norview to visit students. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wade Jenkins and Ms. Cable for that information from your schools. Much appreciated. Beyond the focus on score bands, the English and math offices have created implications and next steps for all of the equity and opportunity students within the division. In the instance of STAR data, we noticed consistent gaps between our black. Our economically disadvantaged subgroups when compared to the whole group. Therefore, in this instance, we would consider these groups within the students of equity and opportunity. Implications and next steps from our foundational reading and math skills, the cultural responsive practices and specially designed instruction. As well as a focus on increased collaboration across content. Special education and ESL offices have been implemented this year to assist with greater needs due to the COVID nineteen slide. Finally, a review of some of the division-wide resources and strategies that have been put into place to assist with improving student learning. The addition of the twelve instructional coaching positions have all been filled and are currently working with teachers to provide coaching. Professional development and support to priority schools. Title one monthly teacher meetings led by the English and math teams have a focus on progress monitoring and interventions. Letters or language essentials for teachers and of reading and spelling. Training, which is specific coursework in the science of reading, which includes systematic phonics instruction. Has started a cohort last year and a second cohort is beginning this fall. With a goal to ensure that at least one person in each elementary school participates in this lead, the lead, lead. Train the trainer. Professional development. The beginning of a grow our own reading specialist cohort with the College of William and Mary begins in January. Similarly, Norfolk Public Schools is in an RFP process to begin a grow your own math specialist cohort. Dedicated time has also been given to the English, math and special education teams with principals and leaders from all schools on a monthly basis to provide additional instructional support. Working across offices and collaborating with core content, special education and ESL office. Expectations are being provided on how to interpret data. And to use the data to drive instruction, intervention and specially designed instruction. Finally, as mentioned earlier in the presentation. Utilizing time on asynchronous Wednesdays to provide a wide variety of professional development opportunities and supports. Teachers is already in place. Thank you for allowing us to share this data, implications and next steps on this afternoon. I would also like to thank Ms. Wade Jenkins and Ms. Cable for sharing their work in this data as well as Ms. White, Ms. Collins and Ms. Bay and the development of this presentation. And at this time, we stand ready to answer any comments or questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
I am so impressed with the presentations from our principals that have shared with us. All of the attention and focus that they are doing with their students. So I'm just going to give them another hand. Because it was great. I remember when we were doing school visits. We would go into a certain room in a lane and they would call it the data room. And you would have your red zone children, your yellow zone children, your green zone children. To me, what that immediately said was we have a focus of identifying where students are so that we can. Not just come in the room and sit down and make lesson plans, but to really track. How we can get the yellows to the greens, the reds to the yellows and the yellows moving on so forth. And so, you know, while I hear a lot in the background about, you know. Testing and getting data and things like that, this is, this might be the only opportunity we have in order to get a foundation of. You know, where our children are performing and how we can. Monitor progress. And so I appreciate all of the effort that the division has done in order to. Share this data, all of the data with the board. So thank you very much for that. What I'd like to say is. As much as we can engage our parents in this process, I heard Ms. Cable talk about. Relaying information to the parents about where their child is. What they, what the school is doing in order to provide interventions. And that's not just if they're in the yellow zone, but even if they're in the green zone, I'm sure that you. Tell them, hey, your kid's reading wonderful. This is what you can do in order to enrich them. But as much as we can engage our parents. In what these reports mean for their child and what the school is doing to accelerate growth and provide interventions. And, you know, hold parents accountable too, and then begin that dialogue about if there are things that are needed in the home. What can we do as a school division to assist with that? I would say that in addition to all of the other great items that the division is focusing on, Dr. Birdsong. That would be the only item that I would, I would say would be greatly appreciated and. I, I share the urgency. Of getting these students as much attention is needed in order to help them make the gains that we all want them to have.
If I could just briefly respond, Dr. Gabriel, absolutely. And if you recall earlier, I believe it was in September, the board asked a policy where we are now. Required to inform parents if they're below benchmark and, and I know principals also inform parents of results overall. But we will be informing parents if they're below benchmark and what opportunities there are to assist with those students.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Campson? And then Ms. Bassin.
Just a quick thank you. This presentation was great. But better than even the presentation was the information we got from it with how this data is being so successfully used. These two principals, wow. I wish I still had school-aged children to send to your schools. Because you have really, this is a great instrument. I remember when it first started using it twenty years ago, we didn't get all this information. It, it just tells you everything you need to do and how to pinpoint everything. And that doesn't mean it gets used that way because not, and not everyone will, but now we see here in Norfolk Public Schools. Dr. Paul and, and all of the principals and teachers have done such an excellent job of taking. This data and using it in the best possible way. This is how you close achievement gaps. This is how you get equity in your instruction is by collecting this data and then using it. To intervene and make a difference in the lives of our children. I'm almost tearing. I'm so excited having heard, heard this presentation. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms. Campson. Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions about the data itself. So the student, sorry, the students that were tested, can you? Let me see. Are they a hundred percent of the students at each of those grade levels or do you have any data on? What percentage of students were tested?
I do have that data. So this year. And I'll just run down the list real quick. In grade two, ninety-one percent of our students. And three was ninety-five percent, four was ninety-six percent, five was ninety-eight percent. And then the average across middle schools, we, well, we had eighty-eight percent. For grade six, eighty-nine percent for grade seven and ninety percent for grade eight.
Okay. And then what about grade nine?
So grade nine being the first year, we. We had, I'm trying to look at that right now. We had a total of. Sorry, my eyes aren't as good as this presentation is small. Sorry, my eyes aren't as good as this presentation is small. We had a total of, um. Of just over a thousand, uh, we did have some schools being the first year that they've administered. The STAR assessment, there was some, some minor difficulties online that we know we need to grow with. Um, so for baseline data, we had about just shy of eleven hundred students who took it, which is. Um, which is less than what we have enrolled in our non honors, um, English courses.
Okay, so that's a much smaller percentage, so what, uh. What struck me is both for reading and math, the significant difference between. Last year, uh, the twenty nineteen and the twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty twenty-one. You know, are, are significantly different and then. You know, thinking about our earlier enrollment data, I was curious if those students who were not enrolled. Um. In ninth grade this year. Um, who may have been struggling students in eighth grade, you know, because you know, I, I'm really concerned about the dropout. Um, if that, if that is not reflected, so that's why I was asking about the percentage of, of those enrolled. Who were actually tested. Um, and can you, can you tell me a little more about when the testing occurred? Like, did this occur in September?
So the testing window was extended through mid October. So it, we, it was not at the start of school because we really wanted to focus on reconnecting with our students. So this, this could have occurred all the way through October sixteenth, I believe.
Okay, but some schools could have began, begun to testing in September, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so testing could have started. You know, the third week, because I think I recall, you know, some saying that testing did begin in September. Um, so I, you know, I think that would be interesting to look at because, you know, we're all, I know we've all asked a lot of questions about. You know, device distribution connectivity. And even before we get into the implications and next steps, it's really under, you know, ensuring that the structural. Issues, um, have been dealt with, you know, uh, understanding what the barriers are and making sure that those barriers have been removed before really getting into. Um, the next step, so. You know, I'd be curious to see how those that performed earlier. And later, you know, if there, if there were variances there and how that might have impacted the data. Um, so, um. So, and, and a follow up question to that is of those that were enrolled in eighth grade. Um, so this is kind of a blend of, you know, the previous presentation and this one, so those that were enrolled in eighth grade. Um. And haven't been withdrawn from the district. Um, you know, what kind of outreach do we do? To ensure that they were logged in and prepared for ninth grade? I don't know if you can speak to that.
Well, I can speak to some, but I think Dr. Gibson could probably speak to more of it as far as what each of the schools did for. Um, pre-service and connecting with their students and families, Dr. Gibson, if you want to, uh, answer that one?
Sure. Um, in the month of August, we had ninth grade transition activities at each of our high schools. And we tried to make sure that the high schools were able to have new student orientation as well. So that all incoming ninth graders as well as new students would have the opportunity to learn about the school. To pick up their devices, to connect and to get ready to start the school year.
Okay, and you, do you by any chance know what percentage of students participated in those activities or?
I don't have those numbers.
Okay. I, I would really like to know that if, um, you know, just from going forward as we. You know, continue to monitor, um, the engagement of our students in this virtual environment, I think that's an, an important piece of information. Um, the other, um, some other questions I have are. Um, so. Let me see, um, pull up. So with the math in particular, what, um. You know, instructionally, when we think about implications and next steps. You know, how are our students, because you know, I think, I imagine it would be very different that from reading, you know, because, you know, they have to work out the problem, show their work. And all of that, how, how are students able to submit their work and get feedback, you know? Because that, that to me is all preparation for, you know, some of these assessments, are we able to get? Um, our students to support, our students and our teachers to support in the virtual space to be able to assess. Um, you know, the math needs of our students and if not, you know, are there supports or software? Or anything that, that the board can help support, um, our district in providing for, for our students?
So since the, since the start of doing professional development for virtual learning, one of our focus points has been on how do we get student feedback? Um, I have Ms. Rhonda White here, our senior math coordinator that I'd love to weigh in on that. Um, on how the students are giving specific math feedback.
Okay, thank you. Several ways, actually, our professional development has been focused around that, especially with administrators. But definitely with teachers as well, so we're taking advantage of platforms such as Canvas. And having teachers to realize that that can be used as a way to actually have the students actually engaging in activities. We also are taking a lot of time to help teachers to use, um, Google and Google slides and how to make those interactive. And there are some other platforms that we are playing around with such as Nearpod. And even Desmos and Desmos has been used as a calculator platform, but it's also a very engaging platform that I was even at a professional development today with teachers. And we explored how to use that and to actually be able to give the feedback to students once they show their work. Now, in order to turn in work, some teachers are being creative and having students to take pictures and upload their work. Or if they have used Google slides to make an interactive document or an interactive notebook, students are able to respond. And then they're able to submit that to teachers, whether it's through Canvas or through Google Classroom and actually those two. Do work, they, they actually can talk to each other. So using lots of platforms, we've been able to do that, the students also have access to online textbooks. I was at a PD today for our teachers with several teachers exploring our elementary online textbook. And again, they're able to interact and engage with the textbook, they're even able to write their answers in K five. And on the pages and the teachers can then see their thinking and then respond to that formatively, so they can still use that data. I shared at a principal meeting how they can use that information and it's just like hovering above a student's desk, except. You're hovering above their screen and you're able to show their screen in a grid fashion, so to speak, so that you can see everyone's thinking.
Okay, all right, and you just reminded me a question I feel like I ask, um, every year around the textbooks and. Whether, you know, all of our students or teachers who are using textbooks or students have received them. And even in this, um, you know, I know we also use a lot of e-textbooks. Are those, have those been provided to our teachers and our students to, to use as well?
Correct, yes, all, all the textbooks have been provided. Um, and we've even provided, um, hard copy textbooks to students who needed them or desired them.
Okay, okay, great, um. And let's see, and my last, uh, question for now, um, so the Grow Your Own Specialist Program with William and Mary. We've had cohorts in the past where, you know, we've, um. Provided some, you know, uh, funding investment toward these programs and, and then we've had teachers, you know, go through this wonderful training. And then, you know, um, serve our, our students. Um, but sometimes, you know, we've also been known as being a great training ground because we have no. We haven't had stipulations in the past that they should work, you know, for Norfolk Public Schools for a certain amount of time or. Um, you know, or anything like that, um, so sometimes we have lost, uh, teachers, you know, after the training is complete. Um, can you talk a little bit about the funding investment that we've, uh, invested in this and if. There's discussion about having any sort of parameters around. Um, you know, how long, uh, you know, they would work in the district?
So you asked a great question and about, I want to say about a month and a half or two months ago. Mr. Brady and I were talking about that, we've looped Mr. Phillips in and we're looping our legal team in. Do have some kind of a, uh, an agreement put in place where the teachers who we're gonna, we're gonna pay for their. Additional schooling have a set amount of time where they're required to stay in Norfolk, I believe we're trying for three years. But if they do this, that they, not only they stay in Norfolk, but they, um, when positions are open. That they go to interview for those positions, even if they're, it's a high need school that the teacher may. Want to stay at their own school, but if we're going to invest this, we know you, you are, um, have the capabilities to work with, uh, all students and build them up. So we are actually exploring that right now, Ms. Basin.
Okay, great, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, um, can you, I'm sorry, I missed that last part, so they, um, if they come back and. Or if they. What was the three years, what do they get in three years?
So we were asked, we're trying to put something in place where if the division is paying for their higher education courses. They have to stay with the division for at least three years when they complete that. And they don't just get the, the, the certification and go to a different, you know, school division within the region.
Okay, so is it paid out over the three years, is that what you're anticipating or?
Well, you know, it's just. Our, our opportunity to try to hold the resources that we've, we've built within the division, in the division. Because, you know, previously, it, it's, it's been where we've had a, uh, uh, someone. Complete the coursework and then the next year they take a job in another division. And so Norfolk's paid for all this coursework and, and done all the professional development and then we lose it to a, a, maybe a sister city nearby.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. Um, okay, well, thank you so much, if, okay, Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Dr. Paul, can you explain your, your definition of, uh, high need?
So the, the high need schools, those are, those are where we have more equity and opportunity students that, uh, that started at the title one schools. Uh, so they're just higher academic need.
Okay, and, um. If it's okay, I'd like to know if I can ask, uh, Ms. Wade Jenkins, uh, a question.
Sure.
Yep, absolutely.
Uh, so Ms. Wade Jenkins knows that when I've had the opportunity to visit, uh, with her. I've always complimented on, uh, the growth, uh, in your presentation. You talked a lot about growth, can you share with us? You know, you all don't get to pick your students, we draw attendance zones and the students in those zones, uh, come to your school. But can you describe, um. Some of the efforts that you put forward and your team put forward, um, as students may arrive. Uh, at Lake Taylor in, in ninth grade and what you all are able to do successfully. To have those students, at least ones that may not be on grade level when they arrive. Um. Being able to, uh, uh, walk across the stage with the accomplishments that, um, that, that you all achieve, uh, year after year.
Right, so, um, we use an all hands on deck approach at Lake Taylor High School. We identify our students very early on. Um, it starts in the summertime, we look at several data points, uh, during the summer. We look at the data from the middle schools to see those students who we think may have. Um, some issues once in, in their transition to high school, so we meet with them very early on along with their parents. Um, we put some support systems in place for them. Um, once they're here, we continue with those support systems, we identify. Those concepts and skills that they need support and we develop intervention plans for them. Um, and in our sessions, we call them data think tank sessions where we talk about specific students. Um, what they need, how we're going to reteach them those concepts and skills and reassess them. And so we do it over and over and over again. And as we do it, we, um, as well as the students, they begin to experience success and it's, it's like wildfire, it grows and. Um, eventually it just, it goes throughout the school. Um, so that's kind of how we do it in a nutshell. Set high expectations and provide support simultaneously and, and you'll be successful.
Thank you for that, and then lastly for Dr. Birdsong or Dr. Paul, uh, maybe Mr. Phillips. So in the, when we identify, uh, having high need schools. And it comes to, uh, recruitment and retention. What opportunities do we provide for the principals at the high need schools to have, uh? Uh, first selection of, uh, staffing when it comes to, uh, our recruitment. Uh, recruitment process, do we give, uh, those principals more autonomy, do we give them? Uh, first opportunity to, uh, to keep teachers that they interview, can you just talk about the? The staffing supports that we provide for our high needs, uh, schools and in the principals thereof?
And, and Mr. Jordan, I'm going to let Mr. Phillips fully, um, speak to that, but I can say generally. Um, certainly, you know, we want teachers to, to be assigned to schools where they want to go and I'm sure that. Um, Mrs. Wade Jenkins and Mrs. Cable will, will share with you both, they don't want teachers that are, are not going to be happy about. You know, being a Titan or, you know, or being at Norview Elementary School. And so, um, certainly, um, again, Mr. Phillips will speak to specifically if they're given, you know, first opportunity to. Uh, interview with these schools and I believe they do, but I want him to speak, uh, to that. But at the end of the day, there has to be a good match, as you know, there's a, a teacher shortage across the nation and. Um, certainly, you know, if a teacher or principal decides that it's not a good fit, we certainly wouldn't turn a good candidate away to, you know, and, and not have them. Maybe, uh, engage in another opportunity to interview with another school, but let me let, uh, Mr. Phillips speak more to that.
Certainly, um, thank you, Dr. Birdsong, what actually happens is with our new Talented System that we use. Principals have access to, um, all of the candidates who apply for positions with our school division. So they're able to contact, um, the individuals directly and have them come in. And basically it's up to them then to sell their school, their building to the candidates who they actually interview, so. I know, um, Ms. Wade Jenkins as well as, as Ms. Cable, um, they both are actively engaged in that process of. Of selling their schools to all of the candidates. And so a candidate can interview with as many, um, schools as he or she chooses. And as Dr. Birdsong says, they will then, based upon the interviews that they've had. And based upon their own knowledge, skills and qualifications, um, choose, um, which school they would want to go to and oftentimes. Um, candidates are offered two or three or four different, um, schools if they are a select candidate. And ultimately it's based upon the best suitability for the position, the, the teacher. Him or herself being comfortable with that particular environment. And so we do give them options and choices and the freedom to make that selection because. Um, I can tell you if we try to force them in, you know, say, well, we're going to tell you where to go, we would likely lose. Um, lose candidates often if we did that. And if they're, um, with the shortage that we're in, they would easily be able to be picked up in another, in another division. Um, so we have to be very mindful and careful of that, um, as well.
Yeah, and just, and I understand that I don't want to be in a position where, I didn't mean to imply that we would force somebody to be someplace that they. Didn't want to be, I just think as a board, uh, we've, um. You know, approved, uh, various incentives in the past, I just think that. In supporting the, the needs of the school, if the principals find themselves in a, in a bidding war somehow. For someone that they want, that perhaps we should be able to provide some additional. Uh, support flexibility, whatever it needs to make sure that, uh, our principals of our highest need schools are able to. Uh, attract and retain, uh, those professionals that, that they think are a good fit for them. So that's what I was trying to get a sense of, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, all right, well, um, thank you, Dr. Paul, for your presentation and I want to give a special thank you to our principals, Ms. Wade Jenkins and Ms. Cable for really giving us the context on how all of the, the, um, testing and the assessments are. Are, um, are working to the advantage of our students and I, you know, so I really appreciate, I really like hearing from the field. So you've been excellent voices for us today, so thank you so much. Okay, um, so moving on. Okay, um, so moving on, we have on our next item, our policy discussion. And we have a, a couple of policies and regulations over. So I'd like to turn it over to either Mr. Clanton or Ms. Bessine for, with our policy committee. Who wants to go? Mr. Clanton, you wanna go ahead?
Oh yeah, I was just gonna turn it over to Dr. Pole.
Oh, okay, or Dr. Pole, go ahead.
All right, um, to, tonight we have fewer policies than we've had the past couple of weeks. We're bringing back policy BCF, um, with the changes to the regulations that were, uh, suggested, uh, last, um, last, uh, time we talked about it. So we brought it back to the policy review committee as well as the, um, leadership team to talk through it. And the main changes, um, if you, let's see, if you actually, if you can go to, BCF hasn't changed because there are no changes requested because we followed VSBAs pattern. But for the regulation, Ms. Tanner, if you had pulled that up, um, the, just if there are any questions or comments or concerns about BCF and the regulation, we made the, a couple of changes that were recommended by, um, a, a few board members. And we did separate out the regulations. So we have a regulation per advisory committee, um, so that, that can be pulled up simpler. But I'll pause for any questions or comments on BCF or BCFR.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm coming, I'm working on the multiple, uh, screens here. But while I put that up with the, with BCF again, so I know you mentioned the BCF regulation. So do we still have individual BCF, uh, policies for each, for each of the, uh, advisory committees?
So the, the, no, the one, it's just the one policy and separated out regulations?
Yeah, I'm trying to, let me find my version, cuz I thought there was some, it looked to me that I'll, I'll find my version I was working on. But it looked to me that we had in the BCF policy, there was, uh, first of all, a reference to, um, uh, Baker Charlie Echo policy, which I think was a standing committees of the board versus, um, advisory committee. So on, um, let's see here.
That ref, yeah, that references on the policy on the red line.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, uh, the BCF dash R, I guess that's the regulation. There's a reference there to the Baker Charlie Echo policy, which is for standing committees of the board. So I didn't know that, I think that cross-reference may be off there. And then, um, where we have under, uh, section A, um, number four and five. So under number four, we say applicants for citizen member positions must be resident of the city of Norfolk. What, what, what's the city member, uh, position referencing?
So if it's, there, there are two, two options there. If there, and there is a parent or their community member, then they are, we want them to be residents of Norfolk City School or Norfolk City. However, if they're there because of a, a position, let's say we wanted to have the city manager on, uh, one of the committees, then if they didn't live in Norfolk, since their position is with Norfolk, that would be the consideration there.
Yeah, so I, I support the idea of, uh, resident members. My concern with that is, um, so let's say we have, um, uh, business partners or other partners that we want to serve on an advisory committee. Uh, they may work in Norfolk, they may not live in Norfolk. So I didn't know if number four and number five, as is currently there, whether or not it would uh, not allow someone, for example, who's serving on the CTE advisory committee, who could be CEO of a company and live somewhere else, not be able to, to serve.
Right, so yeah, so number five specifically says that the service organizations or businesses are not required to reside in Norfolk. So they would be allowed to be on the board, on the advisory committee.
So we're just, we're just trying to designate, I think we may just need to spell out what a citizen member is then.
Yeah, we wanted to try to, um, cuz I know, Mr. Jordan, you gave some recommendations from the last time, but we definitely were trying to find opportunities to kind of look across the entire city. We didn't want people to serve on these, uh, these committees and just be from one section of the city. Um, so maybe that might be something we, uh, cuz one of the things we kind of looked at, just like we represent, um, a ward or whatever else, maybe we kind of look in a geographic area around the city. Um, but that's really what that is, is try to make sure that we find people who represent the various different areas around the city. And maybe we need to just spell that out. Is that what you're saying?
I think I saw that elsewhere where that was spelled out in terms of trying to have geographical representation and have the committees represent the, the makeup of the city. I just wasn't sure, in this particular one, where it was referencing a citizen member, if there was some special category we were defining there and it's so that we were just clear about it. Uh, the other thing, under number seven, I know this probably has been there for a while, but where it references a, uh, a misdemeanor crime. So there have been instances where, um, I've had individuals come forward. They, um, may be citizens, you know, citizens of Norfolk. It may have been sixteen, seventeen, nineteen years old, uh, had a misdemeanor for some reason. And then now they're thirty, forty years old and they want to be able to participate. I, I get the reference to, uh, moral turpitude and all that, I have no issue with that. But I was wondering whether or not the, um, if this misdemeanor crime was to, be a reference to the other attributes, or are we just saying if anyone in their life at some point had been convicted of a misdemeanor crime, uh, they would not be eligible to serve on the advisory committee?
So I, I would have to refer that to Mr. Cloud, as far as I believe that came straight from Virginia Code.
Well, we, if you all take a look at it, cuz I know we, there's been a lot of effort around, uh, you know, restoration and so on and so forth. And I just think that's something we need to look at and maybe if there are certain misdemeanors that we have specific concerns about, that may involve children or something like that, I, I get that, but I don't know if we want it to be that broad. Then, um, on, on number eight for the applications, um, so as I read this, um, I think I understand the timing of it. Um, but I thought there was also another reference to, oh, okay, so under number eight, we have, uh, these dates that we have in there. And then, uh, further down below, under, uh, letter C, retention of citizens, number three, we described this vacancy occurring prior to April first. I just couldn't tell if that, if those two things align well. So just ask that you just take another look at that. Um, and, uh, that's it for now, but I, I do just wanna reiterate, before we had the, um, the individual advisory committees as policies, I know you all are using them now as regulations. Just make sure that we are cross-referencing correctly and that we, um, make sure we don't have any legacy, policies left over in our, in our policy manual that now would be a regulation. Thank you for BCF.
Any other comments on our policies?
I did wanna just bring forward DJZR, um, is a regulation that just updates the amounts because, um, in September, the board passed, uh, DJZ, um, which changed some dollar amounts for spending. So that regulation has just been updated. We just wanted to make the board aware. We know it doesn't take a board vote, but we wanted to bring it forward so you know about it.
Yeah, I saw that. Um, you have some highlighted items here. Did you need anything from us on?
Those, the, as far as the BCFR, those were just the amendments that we made to, to BCF that were requested. The, we discussed last time where instead of a three, one-year term, it'd be one, three-year term. So we did make that amendment. Um, and then we moved the committee shall reflect the ethnic and geographical composition of, of the school division into the full regulation instead of the, um, separate ones for each committee.
Okay. And, Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, are we, if, I don't know if you look for all the policies, but I do have some questions on the charter school policy.
Dr. Martin, I just wanted to interject that Jack Cloud is on the line, but for some reason, he's unmuted, but we can't hear him um, through his phone. And so he wanted me to let you know that, that he's been trying to speak, but for some reason, he's been having difficulties with getting to the Zoom, being seen and heard. But he is on the line and he's unmuted, but for some reason, we can't hear him.
Okay, um, okay, I don't know what to do with that. I mean, unless you can um, speak for him, I don't, I don't know, but I'm sorry to hear that. Um, Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, on the, on the charter school policy, um, there was language that the, that's been, uh, somewhat Norfolk-specific, uh, for some time that was addressing, um, uh, new charters, not taking resources away from uh, existing schools, students and so forth. And, uh, that, that language has been removed. And I'd like to know if you could speak to why that language was removed.
So that it was removed because it wasn't in the VSBAs updates, Mr. Jordan, and this wasn't labeled as a Z policy. So that's one of the effects of, you know, not historically knowing this policy was added, that was specifically added. Um, so that's something that we could certainly discuss as a board, if you'd like that. I'd see exactly what you're talking about. It's the second paragraph, if you'd like that back.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I would recommend it. Uh, I think it's, um, we may still need to work on, uh, however we deal with our VSBAs policies that are guidance versus uh, what we consider a, a Z, which is something that Norfolk Public Schools would originate. Uh, but the, the language, uh, just so everybody knows what I'm referring to, the language reads, "The school board should not approve an application for the establishment of a public charter school if its establishment would, one, divert scarce funds, personnel and other resources from existing programs, um, two, remove high-performing students from other public schools in the district, uh, or three, subject the school board to liability for the charter school's contracts, debts, claims, suits and, and so forth." So I always thought that was, um, good language that, that spoke to our, our, uh, intent around, uh, around charter schools. And then I would just ask for the board moving forward, uh, if we also would just pay close attention to the uh, enrollment process for, uh, charter schools and also what's involved with, um, school board-initiated charters. Cuz in the past, when we were having conversations around, um, the CTE school being a, a charter school with a particular location or any location, there was this, uh, thought that somehow, um, if we ended up having a structure like that, like the Green Run Academy in Virginia Beach, that it would, um, deny existing students at an existing school from participating, uh, in that program. But if you look at the, at our charter school language, it specifically says that if we were to, um, convert a school into a charter, then those students who are at that existing school, uh, basically have the first opportunity for enrollment in that, in that school. So I just wanted to bring that to our, to our attention. So, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Martin, just real quick, I was able to get Jack Cloud on my phone. He's on speakerphone, so, um, if, if it's okay, can he share what he was gonna share before? Okay, go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jack.
All right, uh, I hope everyone can hear me. Uh, there've been technical difficulties that IT couldn't figure out. So I wasn't able to get in through my computer with video. I have been listening to the meeting over my phone, but apparently somehow it wasn't set up so that I could actually speak. Um, I was gonna, what I was gonna say is Mr. Jordan's question before about the misdemeanor. Uh, that misdemeanor provision is tied to a specific section of the Virginia Code that I can, I can send you all an email on. It, it's tied to certain crimes related to child abuse, abuse and neglect. It, it's not, it's not all misdemeanors.
If, Dr. Martin? If, if I may, thank you for that. I just, I, I think it's important then that we try to make sure that we're clear on, uh, what it's, what it's referencing and we don't, um, end up excluding folks who, you know, stole a pencil.
Yeah, we have to be clear on our intent, but, um, okay. Thank you, Mr. Cloud. Dr. Burson?
Yeah, I was gonna say on the charter schools, and some of that I didn't catch because they were kind of patching me in in the process, but I
I was gonna suggest that it go back to, to the policy committee anyway. So, and Mr. Cloud will be at that meeting, so he'll be able to provide some guidance and input.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure, um, that I, I, I support that recommendation. And yes, at the last, uh,
It's not something that has to be there, it's just something that in the past, school boards had requested that it be made a part of the policy. And if, if there was a resolution passed, uh, that, that references.
Yeah.
Back to committee.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take it back to committee and, and review it.
Yeah, it sounds like we need a, a Z policy for this.
Okay, got it. Thank you. All right, um, moving on to our next agenda item, we have, um, future agenda item discussion. So, um, I'll open up the floor. Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm gonna take liberty in this particular point of just raising two things to my colleagues here. One, um, everyone should have received a copy through email some time ago of the Virginia, or the VSBAs legislative, uh, policy agenda. Um, that will come up before the delegate assembly. Um, and it's same night, um, as, uh, well, same day. Uh, cuz, Mr. Jordan, when's your meeting? Is it on that Wednesday, Sunday as a board meeting?
I'm sorry, I was trying to find it. Uh, um, you, same day as which board meeting?
The delegate assembly. Is it the same day as on Monday, Wednesday?
Delegate assembly is on Monday.
Okay, it's on that Monday. So, um, if there's no objections or if there's anything that board members may have, um, cuz I'm serving as delegate on that one, just let me know, um, so that I can, uh, vote the will of the board, um, during that meeting. The other item I wanted to, um, kind of put in the space of everyone is for you to, um, put Monday, November twenty-third down on your calendars. Um, additional information will come out from Dr. Pole and from, um, Ms. Cannon regarding, um, our bring our legislator to school day. Um, and as far as kind of breaking out, so just put it, that's the day. But Dr. Pole will be getting back with us as to what timeframe during that day. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. Um, Ms. Camson and then Ms. Bessine.
Uh, thank you. Really quick, I just want to let everyone have a heads up. Our last meeting, when we were discussing the phases of having children come back for person-to-person, which, once we met the metrics, I had included a motion to give special consideration to the phase one students, which were the, um, students with special needs, self-contained and the, uh, EOL levels one and two. Now, we withdrew it because we were nearing the seventh hour and I didn't wanna add more discussion. Uh, but I will be, uh, make, re, re-submitting that motion at the business meeting next time. And I didn't wanna take anyone's surprise. Thanks. Make re re submitting that motion at the business meeting next time, and I didn't want to take it once by surprise. Thanks.
Okay, okay.
I'll just bring it up during matters of the board. If that, you know, that just seemed like the appropriate place to do it. But if you if if you want, you know. Give me a different direction, just give me a call later. I don't want to use up a lot of time.
Words, so um. Okay, well, we can talk about it.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any, I'm sorry, Ms. Basine, go ahead.
Can you um, can you point me to where the board calendar is that has the topics? But is that is that uploaded? Because I was looking for it on Board Doc so that I didn't re um. You know, raise some of the same topics that uh have been raised previously, um, and just so we can kind of get a sense of where. Uh, things, you know, items will be discussed.
Actually, I have it pinned in my email. So um, Ms. Tanner, are you able to direct us to where the? Uh, the uh calendar is the this.
Dr. Martin. I I think, you know, in during agenda planning, uh, we went through and um looked at the calendar and mapped out. Based upon what what we've heard from the board as well as with the accountability plan, the the presentations, and so um. I I think it might be better if we can um either in the. Draft uh meeting or just send something out to the board so that um. The board knows what we have, uh, you know, put in place in terms of. Uh, superintendent's evaluation, the midyear retreat you discussed earlier and several items. Because I think folks will be um. It won't be on topic if you just go in and look at that calendar because we haven't updated the calendar based upon the agenda planning meeting we just had. So I think it might be better to just let folks know what we have planned for the next two or three meetings as of now. So if there are any gaps. Or any changes, then uh board members can bring that forward to make sure that we haven't missed any of the items.
So what I'm gonna do, and I really want to apologize, if you haven't seen me shuffling through my desk for the past thirty minutes. I had a sheet of paper that had all my notes from our agenda planning meeting that has somehow. Disappeared, so um. I I don't know. So anyways, um. So I'm gonna have to email some some items to you, because I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay, that that would be great. That would be helpful. And the the other the other item, and I think this is a piggyback, I'm piggybacking on Ms. Campson, um. You know, if if we could, you know, have. Uh, I don't know, an item. That is related to that, you know, I just worry that if it's a matters of the board, because that is something that I'm interested in as well. Um, as you know, and I articulated that at the last meeting, um. If there is, uh, if we could have discussion about possibly um. You know, revising the decision in some way, you know, to allow for those special considerations, especially based on. You know, some of the data we've reviewed today. I I think that as a guidepost to to help um with that um. Next step, um. You know, I I support Ms. Campson in that, so um. If that could be an an I an item, you know, in itself. Maybe under discussion decision or whatever, discuss decision discussion portion of the meeting.
Okay.
So I'll um. I'll concur with um Ms. Basine if we could add it as a discussion decision item. Uh, you know, the injection, not saying that I'm for it or not, I just think that we do need to have a discussion.
Okay. All right, I'm taking note, and I I I I literally had that piece of paper right in front of me, um. That was mapped out, so I really I want to apologize. I I can go over some of the upcoming agenda items that we've I've collected from past discussions. Um, but I there's the Fairland Lake Taylor, Papplar Halls, Eastern Updates that's been requested, Specialty Program Updates. Um, Legislative Priorities, which I'm going to be sending an email out um to to uh. So we can have our legislative priorities approved at our next meeting and um. Let's see, we're uh we're scheduling our superintendent's evaluation discussion with Dr. Birdsong. The school board advisory committees, you know, once we have our policy adopted. To approach that subject, an update on our Safe Schools Task Force, we're planning a retreat, our midyear retreat that is going on, so we can continue with our board professional development. So just some of the items that we've been working on, and again, I apologize for not having that in front of me. Dr. Gabriel and then Ms. Um, Basine.
So just remember pre K was on there.
All right. That's from today, right?
No, I had requested that a while ago. An update on our, um, I mean, it it definitely ties into our presentation today, but it was it was enrollment, um. How the division is doing with pre K.
Was it something that we have? Because I did see we had a um. An email about maybe a month ago on enrollment.
Did we just?
Yeah, this was more of a deeper dive um into, you know. What what the division is doing uh to enhance the pre K opportunities that we have in the division recruitment, um. I don't, I don't have to, you know, go into depth right now, but um I had requested that a while ago, and I can talk with you offline about that.
Okay, that'd be great. All right, and Ms. Basine and then Ms. Campson.
Um, yeah, so two two points, um, or two questions, um, so. I think tomorrow night we have the specialty, a virtual specialty program showcase, is that right?
Um. Yeah, and.
Is there, is there anything diff- different, um? You know, so usually, you know, we've had, uh, you know, an update on the specialty programs, um, reviews that kind of. You know, is there anything different or new about, you know, the application process or the programs itself? That can be shared? I don't know. I I guess we'll see tomorrow night, but that it that's still tomorrow night.
That is correct.
Okay, and then um the other, the other uh topic is an update on, I know Cooperative Strategies was doing work. Um, you know, I think even through the summer, um. And I guess a status update on that work, do we still have a contract with them and then a year, I think at our retreat in. Twenty nineteen, we had also talked about beginning the next phase, phase two discussions around Maury. Um, so you know, I think we still have to keep that, um. I think maybe, uh, you know, in the in the queue for discussion.
Um. They, okay, yeah. That just reminds me of two things, um, number.
From a facility standpoint, by the way, yeah. And and I was referring from a facility standpoint.
Right, yeah. So, um. Number one about the specialty programs that's going to be, it's going to air on channel forty seven tomorrow. I just want to, I I I. This is this one of the things that um I'm not going to let go. Uh, I don't have cable, and so I don't get to watch these shows on channel forty seven, and I. Um, I can't be the only one who doesn't have cable, so it's it's kind of frustrating to me that. We have not figured out a way, either as a, you know, as a city, to be able to broadcast to people or public channels to people who don't have cable. Um, so I'm using this platform to just put that out there. We were working on equity, and yet if you don't have, you know, can't pay. Cable for cable, it's a pretty expensive bill, um, you you just don't get the opportunities um. To access the public, the city's television channel. I don't think that's fair. Um, and then the other thing as far as Maury High School, that was the other thing that's on the agenda is. Um, working in the discussion about continuing the discussion about the name changing. Um, so we're looking at some dates to fit that for some of our high school to have that discussion. Um, we're gonna fit that in in the next few months. Okay?
Dr. Martin, if I can, um, about particularly about the name changing piece, I thought that the um, if I was not mistaken. That we were submitting it to the policy committee to look at the overview of the policy regarding name changes. And then that would be the the impetus of coming back to the board to discuss around that. Um, what that process would look like.
You still have that on your agenda?
Yeah, we still have that. We brought it up in committee, so um. Uh, I'm taking it that when you place this into the agenda, that's what we'll be talking about and then going from there, correct?
Would do you have plans to to talk about the policy and?
Yeah, I I brought it up to Ms. Basine and 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 Paul that we needed to um. That had been sent to committee and that we needed to to address the actual naming, um, facility naming policy. And to bring that back, because that was what was supposed, the board was supposed to decide on, once we decided on what that was. Then you kind of had, which your framework would be, um, you know, if you were setting up a committee or whatever else, but that needed to happen first.
That's how it's currently stated in the policy. I wasn't, um. So let's talk about that offline then and figure out a timeline. Again, I haven't selected a date as of yet, because we can work together on that if.
Not a problem.
Needs to, yeah, that discussion needs to happen, that's fine. Okay, um, any other hands for future topics? Okay, all right, thank you, um.
Dr. Martin, not not a not a future topic, so to speak, but at our next meeting, uh. Two of the things that we touched on um today, um, at least I know I did recently with the. Uh, stipends or additional supports for hard to staff schools, just um. You know, at our meeting, at our next meeting, uh, as part of our discussions, just get a a sense of whether or not that is still being um. Provided, and then um. Uh, and then as we talk about the. Cares that and COVID funding, um, whether or not there's any consideration of um. Uh, additional staffing support, should we um support for staff? Should we indeed go down a path where we provide um uh in-person instruction for uh for some students?
Okay, Ms. Basine?
Um, I agree, and in addition to that, um, you know, not only uh. Support in terms of manpower, but if there, if we do return to. In-person learning, you know, I'd like us to explore um. Uh, possible stipends for our teachers who may be um charged with having to do both virtual and in-person learning.
Okay. All right.
Something I think, Dr. Martin, uh, that that I said I would give an update to the board, um. We have, I gave an update to uh Dr. Martin and Dr. Birdsong in terms of our governance training. Uh, I said I would have some, open up some discussions with the Council of Great City Schools about uh services they may offer. I did do that and um have provided that information to uh Dr. Martin and Dr. Birdsong. As a potential opportunity to uh bring something forward to the board for for consideration, so I just wanted just to share that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jordan. Okay, um, thanks, everyone. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we adjourn to closed session.
Tanner? Please call the roll.
Move that members of the school board go into, go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Here and after act as amended for A, the discussion of vulnerabilities and threats to divisions' information technology. And cybersecurity systems pursuant to sections two point two dash three seven zero five dot two. Number two, two point two dash three seven zero five dot two, number fourteen, B. And two point two dash three seven one one A nineteen of the act. The subject of the section of the motion is the discussion of the discovery of various vulnerabilities and threats to such systems. B, the consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation. Or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of subsection two point two dash three seven one one A. Of the act, the subjects of this section of the motion is consultation and briefing regarding the matter set out in section A of this motion. And the current federal court decisions concerning the distribution of funds. Under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act of twenty twenty and the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty five. Basine?
Hi.
Okay, Campson?
Hi.
Clanton?
Hi.
Gabriel?
Hi.
Jordan?
Hi.
Smith? And Martin?
Hi. All right, I'll see you in the, on the other link.
Hey, thank you. Can I get a motion to come out of closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we come out of closed session.
Hey, Ms. Campson.
Actually, Madam Chair, I had to correct that, because we're actually certifying the closed session.
We need to come out of it, and then she reads the resolution.
Yeah, to certify the closer.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, please, resolution.
A resolution certifying an executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote. And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia. Requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting. To which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the executive meeting were heard. Discuss or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Basine?
Hi.
Campson?
Hi.
Clanton?
Hi.
Gabriel?
Hi.
Jordan?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Okay, well, with that, our meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everyone. Stay safe. Thank you.